Laconia Planning Board to order, 6:33 PM. Could we have a call of the roll, please?
Kirk Piatti?
Here.
Travis Sinclair?
Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Present again for it. Thank you. Thank you. That's Kalina. She's our recording secretary staff here tonight. We have the planning director Dean Trefethan and Robert Moore sitting in the big boy chair tonight, which is good. The minutes from the July, rather, the June 7th minutes, have you guys all had a chance to review those as amended? You may recall it was a motion to amend the original draft minutes. Are there any further comments? I'd like to do a roll call vote on this one if I could. On acceptance of minutes.
Yeah, no, I get that.
That was last month.
We've, right, we voted to accept the amendment, correct? As the, that is correct, we voted to it. That was a affirmative.
That was the May minutes.
That was an, that was to amend the May minutes.
Right. That's not the one we're voting on.
No, we're talking on the June minutes.
My bad. Yes.
Travis Sinclair?
Yes.
Rich McNeil?
Yes.
Brett Bellaba?
Yes.
Abstain.
Louis Joseph?
Yes.
Scott McWilliams?
Yes.
Peter Burnett?
Yes. Okay. Actually, put me down as abstain on that one. We have a presentation tonight. I'm sure that's what everyone's here for. A thrilling presentation from our planning director, which is a proposal for the draft natural resource chapter of the master plan.
Well, hello, everyone. My name's Taylor. Nice to see you all. I think I've met you all a few times, but I'm the conservation technician here. So I'm going to present the draft of the natural resources master plan chapter that I worked on this past year. So for starters, it was last updated with the 2007 master plan along with the other chapters. It laid out 25 goals, 18 of which are complete or in progress or a continuous effort. So to begin updating the natural resources chapter, I needed to work on the 2009 natural resources inventory, which I updated in the fall and spring this year. So some of the goals for that were to incorporate more current data and information relative to environmental concerns today. So that included the spatial data and making sure all the numbers were accurate for the city. It also included adding information about climate change because it's obviously a very pressing topic now and the implications it may have on our natural and manmade systems. Included talking about the New Hampshire Fish and Game Wildlife Action Plans and acknowledging the coordination between local groups, the city, and the state in all these efforts. I also aim to continue considering natural resources in the comprehensive planning of the city and identifying a number of resource and conservation recommendations. So on the left here, you can see the table of contents for the natural resources inventory. So some of the major categories were topography and geology, soils, water resources, wildlife and habitat, scenic resources, conservation land, climate change, and historical and cultural resources. And then the recommendations that came from the updating of the NRI included wetland and vernal pool protections, aquifer and groundwater protection, invasive species management plans, view shed protection, climate change mitigation considerations, interagency cooperation, and conservation land acquisition. And there's a number of actions with each of those recommendations, and most of them made it into the master plan goals and actions as well. So after the NRI was written, I needed to update the natural resources chapter itself. So I was incorporating information from that document. The chapter includes a vision statement, a summary of the different natural resources in the city, a discussion on climate change, a review of the current conservation and protective efforts in the city, and goals and action for future management. And so on the right here, I have the vision statement that we worked on, that I wrote with the Conservation Commission. So it reads that "The natural environment is an essential component to Laconia's character and economy, and the city is committed to protecting the quality of its natural resources and ensuring that they're sustainable management for generations to come." "We envision a community in which residents are well-educated about the value of their surrounding landscapes and are invested in its well-being. Cooperation efforts from surrounding municipalities, the state of New Hampshire, and local environmental partners will create an atmosphere where communication and innovation are factors, are the key factors in the management of our resources." So that's kind of the broad goal that we are aiming at, and we address that in all of our actions as well. So I have a sample page here, and everyone at the table should have a copy of the entire report. But the sample slide here is what most of the resource pages look like. So I designed them so that they're brief and informative, but educational and local to Laconia. So for instance, this is the soils page. It offers some general background info on soils and how they're evaluated, the common soil series in Laconia, and then it breaks down the agricultural forested and hydrolic soils in the city with an explanation of what those are and the acreage in the city as well. And so all the resources, resource page, pages follow a similar format, and it includes things like land cover, habitats, water resources, things like that. Some pages also include links to outside sources so that people can get further information if they're interested. So for the goals and actions, which are the most important part, these are what are hopefully going to guide our natural resources management in the future. So I've laid out five goals and 22 actions with the help of CONCOM. Some of these are intuitive and already being worked on to some degree, and some of them are new ideas. They're all meant to be achievable in one to 10 years, but many are continual efforts that don't have an end in sight, like water quality monitoring. And a number of these are actually already ongoing, which is pretty exciting. And the overarching, overarching like action and theme that you'll see in the goals and actions is education and awareness for the public. So that's something we really wanted to focus on, as stated in the vision statement. And so we want everyone to be aware of the impact that they have on their surroundings at like a micro and a macro scale. So to do that, we want to up our educational efforts among visitors and residents in the city. So I'll go through the five goals right now and some of the actions involved in them, and then we can discuss any changes and things like that. So the first goal is focusing on protections that enhance and retain quality and quantity of surface waters and groundwaterers in Laconia, which is arguably the most important, as we all know that the lakes here are a huge contributing factor to the livelihood here. So action one was to develop an aquifer protection overlay district. There are similar ordinances in surrounding towns that can be used as a base model, but generally, these are aimed at protecting, preserving, and maintaining the groundwater supplies that could be used in the future for drinking water. And it's aimed at preventing contamination, and it tends to be very similar to the types of uses that we allow in a shoreline protection area. Action two is to consider designating large wetland complexes as prime wetlands. So we understand that this is something that entails public opinion and council support as well. So we have some ideas about one or two that would be beneficial to the city, but it's something to consider in the future. Action three is to improve protections and documentation of vernal pools in the city. So this is ongoing, and it's relatively easy to complete. So I want to work on a database and a mapping system that will allow us to monitor and keep track of where they are in the city in-house so that it's not something we need to outside source for. Goal four is to consider conducting a private well and septic inventory. That's something that can also be relatively quickly done, and it would be a great idea for us to have an idea about where we might have faulty or leaky systems as in regards to water quality at least. Action five is to continue monitoring water quality. So this is an example of one of the goals that we're constantly doing, but we want to improve on. So we are already working on adding Opechii sampling for tributaries and deep water for this summer season, but certainly next summer as well. And we're working with a lot of groups in the area on that as well. And finally, education and outreach, which we'll see in all of these. Goal two is to investigate climate change mitigation strategies to further protect life and property. So action one would be conduct a flood hazard study that would let us know where flood-prone areas in the city are, as well as possible areas for flood storage. So flooding is going to increase with the changes in precipitation that are anticipated from climate change. So this would be really beneficial for us to have a good idea about where our areas of risk are and where would be the best opportunity to implement stormwater management practices. Action two is a stream restoration plan for Durkey, Jewett, and Blackbrook, as well as a handful of others. Streams that have degraded over time can impact water quality and habitat. So we'd like to get ahead of that. Identifying areas in the city with increased stormwater runoff. This one has been partially completed already. CONCOM and I worked with a student from Antioch University who did a GIS project on this. And it's not a one-to-one, but it allows us to determine the runoff expected in areas for certain amount of storms in the city. And pretty shortly, I'll have access to that and can apply it to other areas in the city as well for us to see where runoff might be more of an issue than other places. Action four, develop an invasive species management plan. So we currently have milfoil plans, but there are also terrestrial invasives that can affect our economy and businesses and life on the lake as well. So identifying where these infestations are and where they're most prominent would be beneficial and to start like the first step in starting a management plan. And then action five, identify areas that might be suitable for rain, pollinator, or pocket gardens. So these are simple but really effective efforts in mitigating some of the impacts of climate change, and it's something we can work on with residents, businesses, and the city alike. And then also educational materials on climate change impacts here in Laconia. Goal three is to investigate and prioritize parcels for conservation land and acquisition. So this goal is mostly to ensure that we're pursuing easements that are valuable to us and are the most suitable for that designation as conservation land. So I would like to develop a system that prioritizes land for conservation acquisition that considers a number of different factors to be determined, but it would basically allow us to assign a conservation value to a parcel and then determine if that is a high-value parcel for conservation easement or a low-value. And that can be compared across the city, and it would be a good idea just to have an idea of where our higher conservation areas are. To go along with that, conserving parcels of unfragmented land would be most important, which are up in the northwest quadrant of the city. And finally, we'd like to work on conservation easement education so people know that what uses are allowed and what they can do on our lands that are currently existing. Goal four is to continue fostering partnerships between the city and local groups. So we have a lot of partnerships right now, but we want to add to them. These are going to make working on things that cross municipal borders easier and give us an idea about everything going on around us. So issue meetings would be really helpful for us, understanding the projects that municipals or municipalities surrounding us are working on and what would be beneficial for us to work with them on. Action two would be to research and partner with other groups developing a trail system. So this is something we discussed in CONCOM, and this would be a really great opportunity to connect some of our existing land to trail systems in other towns. And that's an opportunity to work with them. And finally, we want to continue to support like-minded groups such as New Hampshire Lakes, the Taylor Community Watershed Networks, which we're already working with, but we want to keep those relationships strong. And an example of how we're currently working on that right now is we're working with the Winesquam Watershed Network and the Lake Opechii Preservation Association to kickstart the water sampling on Opechii. And finally, goal five is to reduce the environmental impacts of development within the city. So this approach is to ensure that we're working with developers and continuing the pro-development environment that we have, but also maintaining the integrity of the environment around us. So one of the actions is to encourage environmentally friendly development practices like low-impact development, previous surfaces, and infill. And one of the things we've considered for that is an incentive program of some type with development that where if you offer these amenities or these types of designs and initiatives, you receive some type of development benefit. Action two would be to regularly review erosion and sediment control practices and update the ordinance so that we are keeping up the standards and holding developers accountable for the standards that we want them to be using on their sites. We would like to investigate opportunities for wildlife habitat restoration. So as development continues to increase, we want to make sure we're not depleting certain habitats. So one of the instances that we've discussed is fish passage through Pickrell Cove near Hilliard Road. And we would like to think about systems that allow them, like habitats, to be uninterrupted and unfragmented. And finally, we would like to work on a system that notifies contractors of environmentally sensitive resources located on or around their sites. So we talk to developers, but we want to make sure the contractors are on board as well and that they know what is on the site that they're working on. And so those are the five goals and the actions that we set out, and here to hear any feedback you guys have.
I want to apologize for introducing Dean instead. Taylor, what is your last name?
Daigle.
And you, you're the, you work for the Conservation Commission as a city employee?
Yes, I'm the conservation technician.
And this was a great project. And when I was a student, I wrote a chapter of a master plan. It was an eye-opening experience. I think you did a great job. I have some questions. I'm sure the other board members do. But before we get there, I neglected to state for the record, there is no Zoom tonight due to technical problems. Maybe something to do with the storm. I don't know. And Louis Joseph and Scott McWilliams are both their alternates, but they will be seated as full members tonight. Or maybe not, now that Michael's here. One of them.
Still good. Nine.
Okay, so we're all, we're good. All right. So anyway, again, thank you very much for that presentation. Might as well start with the last part of it, and that is your recommendations and the goals and actions, some of which are going to require expenditures by the city. Is there been any discussion with the planning department about perhaps making such presentations to the Capital Improvements Plan Committee? They usually meet early in the budget cycle. They'll start meeting in a few months, I guess, right? When do we start?
It's on our agenda.
Yeah, okay. So especially some of these things, not so much documentation like mapping and things, but enforcement and investigating and prioritizing parcels. You know, if the city could somehow have some funds available to encourage people to put conservation easements in place, like sharing, cost-sharing, things like that, that would be great. And what was the other questions I had? Any other questions? Will I find my questions? Stacy?
Goal number two. Number four, the invasive species, is that lake only or also land?
I would like to use both. So we have milfoil for the lakes. It does not address all invasive species that are present in our lakes. But I would like to also work on something for terrestrial plants. They tend to be in disturbed areas and along roadside. So you'll see a lot of Japanese knotweed or bittersweet along those areas. And sooner or later, they can become prohibitive to businesses and travel in general.
I have a follow-up. So would climate change, would that stimulate the establishment of invasive species?
Yeah, so they're anticipated to outplay the native species here. They are more adaptable. And so as the climate changes and the native species need to shift to meet the weather patterns that they thrive in, invasive species will continue to increase in presence.
Regarding marine plants, they're more than just an impediment to boat navigation, right? I mean, they, can they change the lake environment?
Yeah, depending on what the species is, and if it's an animal or a plant, they can change the biological parameters in the water. It can influence things like cyanobacteria and other environmental issues that we're starting to see a lot more of lately.
And those plants are in shallower areas generally, right?
Milfoil definitely is. They tend to be in areas where there's less of a current. So coves tend to have issues with them, but there are animals that can just, they come in on a boat and they make their way through the lake bed and.
Did you find any useful maps here in the city or at DES?
There is a map in the natural resources inventory of priority areas based on the state study that was done. It identifies areas that are most at risk for having more invasive species. So the lakes are very high-risk, and then shorelines, and then disturbed road areas are typically second.
Most of the members of the board can attest, the brooks you identified have a long history of flooding in the urban core because they haven't run right through it. So, and I think that's not been adequately addressed, so. All right, that's all for me. Anyone else have any questions for Taylor? Mr. McWilliam?
Thank you. Goal four, you mentioned some partnerships. Does the city, just curious, do they partner with the Winesquam Watershed Network?
Yeah, we do work with them, actually. Dean, our conservation chair is a member of the Watershed Network. So we work pretty closely with them and keep up to date with the work they're doing.
Oh, great, because I know they do a lot of water sampling and so on on Winesquam.
Yeah.
You mentioned trying to expand that into Opechii.
Yeah, so we test tributaries and deep water samples on Pogus Bay right now, and we are working with the state to set up the things that we need to begin that on Opechii as well. We're hoping to do at least one round in August this year.
One last question. I know that, you know, some of our lakes have had cyanobacteria outbreaks, and a lot of that is from nitrogen phosphorus runoff. Are there any initiatives to control phosphorus through, you know, non-phosphorus detergents and the like?
So that could be a part of the educational component, especially on shorefront properties. There are restrictions on the kind of fertilizers you can use and the substances you're putting on your lawn. Those don't get followed all the time because a lot of people aren't aware of those things. But there are certainly routes that we can take to increase awareness about that and hopefully add them to the city's best management.
What about products? I'm talking like soap and laundry detergent that typically.
I'm not aware of specifics for that. I'm not too familiar with the chemical side of the thing, the issue, but it's certainly something that can be investigated.
Yeah, I know some communities have, you know, ordinances now that limit how much phosphate can be in those kinds of products. And it's an easy way to control it because everybody does laundry and washes dishes and stuff.
Yeah, that could be something we explore.
Thank you. Any other questions? The, under actions on page one, under goal number one, number two, consider designating large wetland complexes up gradient from water bodies as prime wetlands. Now, if we looked at a map of the watersheds in Laconia, most of the city would be within a watershed, wouldn't it?
Well, so we don't want to designate watersheds, just a certain wetland complexes, which are the soils, vegetation, and the functions of a wetland, which are a lot less.
Partly is to filter land, I mean, water that comes through from runoff and groundwater.
Yeah, they have a lot of really great benefits. One of them is cleaning the water that eventually ends up going back into the groundwater in our communities. They remove sediment, phosphorus, nitrogen, things like that.
Okay. Well, we're looking at, or at least talking about development in the northwest quadrant of the city, where most of our prime agricultural land is, and some incredibly developable land as well as wetlands. And my hope that this, these goals and actions are adopted as part of our master plan.
Absolutely.
Should we ask if there's any members of the public here that wish to? I mean, we didn't really open a public hearing on this, but.
I think you would need to schedule a public hearing, and we could advertise it as such.
Okay.
I think tonight is an introduction, and you get a copy of it. And then if you want to go further, and I certainly hope that you do want to go further with it this evening, I would schedule a public hearing, and you could do a possible vote to adopt at the next meeting.
All right. Dean, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I don't. I think I would just like to compliment what Taylor has done. She has done an excellent job, not only writing the natural resource inventory, but pulling out those parts that needed to be presented tonight. So she's done an excellent job on it.
I would concur. When I made my introductory remarks, I remembered how much work goes into so little work product because you have to do all your research, crunch all the numbers, and then present things that, you know, people like us are going to have to understand. And ultimately, if the public doesn't understand the master plan, it won't be implemented. So, and be sure when there's discussions about budgetary matters that enforcement be included in that because that's an issue the planning board has in general. And conservation and planning, I think, maybe need to have their own enforcement people. All right. Thank you very much, Taylor. That was wonderful.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. I got to get rid of all this other stuff I had to do.
Chair, do you want to schedule a public hearing or?
Oh, sure. Yeah. This would be for the purpose of deciding whether to adopt this, get public input on that. I mean, we wouldn't have to act on the adoption in the same night as the public hearing.
No, you would not have to, but you could.
What is the pleasure of the board? Shall we schedule a public hearing for the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So make it so, number one.
Okay, very good.
Do we need to make a motion?
Did I just really say that?
No.
All right. Well, he says one other tricky in the room. Stop it. It'll turn into R2D2, and that's going to be the end of it. All right. Extensions. The first extension before us tonight is PL 2011 0024 SP, 0026 CUP, and 27 CUP, steep slope and wetlands respectively, and a blah. What is a BLA again? 2015?
Boundary line adjustment.
Boundary line adjustment from 2018. It looks like there was two of those. The address given is 553 Weers Boulevard. This is the Langley Cove Development, with which most of the members of the board are familiar, and a request to extend the approval. This is a 291-unit cluster development that's already been approved and boundary line adjustments pertaining thereto. If the, if it's extended, the date would be July 11th, 2023. Does that work for the developer?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then I will yield the floor to you.
So everything you guys were just talking about, about phosphorus in the Pogus Bay, is the reason I'm standing here asking you for an extension. I've been working, trying to get the alteration of terrain permit with the state of New Hampshire.
Yeah.
And the phosphorus requirements are beyond anything I've ever dealt with. I've never had this much trouble getting an AOT permit. But that being said, we've been working really close with the state of New Hampshire, and we turned in plans to the city of Laconia yesterday and the state of New Hampshire this morning with everything basically addressing what we've been having meetings with them for like the last two months. We anticipate this round of what we're working on with them to be successful. And as you know, you may or may not know, but Pogus Woods, the third phase is under development right now. It's being constructed right now. And it's anticipated that as soon as we have our alteration of terrain permit, that the entrance to Langley Cove and possibly the extension up into Pogus Woods is going to be, is going to go under construction this summer, so.
Which is why the next item is the extension for the lot line adjustment.
Yeah, the lot line adjustment for Pogus. All that is, is just the road going in there.
Yep.
The Langley Cove lot line adjustment plans and all that, all that stuff did get recorded.
Yeah.
And Luke Powell is our wetland scientist, and he's been working on wetland permits and shoreline permits. We have all the shoreline permits already in place for Langley Cove, and we anticipate having the wetland permit probably within another week and a half or so. So with that, once we have the alteration of terrain permit, it's, we're anticipating to be going under construction.
What is the concern about phosphorus? Is it gray water we're talking about?
It's Pogus Bay is the drinking water source, and it's in a naturally. in a naturally high phosphorus area, and just because of the, how developed everything is, it, it receives a lot of phosphorus. And right now, the Langley Cove, the Langley Cove property is essentially just wood. When I did, when I did some work in town, like, for the Barton's project, it was a fully developed project, and we did talk about phosphorus during that application, but because the Barton's motel was so completely developed that with, with no base, with basically no controls on the runoff, what we were doing actually improved the situation, and we didn't have to go to the level that we're going to with virgin ground. 2020 hindsight, it would have been, if, if, right when we got the approval for Langley Cove, if we would have gone through, there would have been a lot less requirements from the state of New Hampshire. But by doing it the way we did it, the city of Laconia is getting a much more robust drainage system for Langley Cove.
Johnny, are you talking about phosphorus, naturally occurring phosphorus in the soil and underlying?
That, and, that, and just the, the, because Laconia, so much of Laconia, and there's so much development that goes into the lake, that anything that's completely undeveloped right now, they're really making sure that, that the new areas don't contribute anything.
Well, you could, it's going to be a condominium development, not a plant, so.
But what, what we're doing is.
You could have a rule against using potash, I mean, yeah.
Yes and no. What, what ends up happening is the, the, the way the detention ponds are constructed, there's material, it's like a biomaterial, it, it's almost like a gravel wetland, but with iron filings and stuff in it that actually remove, it binds to the phosphorus and removes it. So, it's quite an elaborate system that.
You have to remove that material?
I've never, I've never actually done it before, so that's why it's been such an interesting process.
Isn't that what makes engineering such a challenging, challenging thing?
Yep. So, as, as Taylor was up here right before me talking about phosphorus, that's, I've been dealing with it, so.
Well, that's a good reason for an extension, if I ever heard one. Charlie?
I'm just curious, when you said "they," who is "they"? You said they are making me do this, or making?
Oh, I'm sorry, the, the, I, when I say "they," I mean the state, the state of New Hampshire Alteration of Terrain Program. Like, the, there's a reviewer, there's, there's Ridge Mock is above him. I mean, there, everybody's kind of going through things and making sure it is exactly what it needs to be.
I just wanted to know who "they" was.
Yeah, yeah. State of New Hampshire DES.
There's, there's like a committee that makes decisions. Yeah, it's pretty heavy stuff.
Like I said, I mean, I've, I've done a lot of AOT permits, and this has been the toughest one I've ever done, so.
Well.
I anticipate, last year when we were here, and everything was kind of submitted, we were in process, I, I anticipated it just to go the way it normally goes, and I get through the permit process, but it has not worked that way, so.
Well, that's the problem with expectations, Charlie.
Yep. So, anyway.
Any other questions for the applicant? The, the question before us is whether to extend their approval until July 11th, 2023. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, pardon me? I was given July 11th.
Ah, okay.
Did you have the October one on yours?
She had July 7th.
Oh, yeah, I have July 7th, yeah.
This is the most recent thing written by Kalina, so I'm going to go by that.
I have the calendar for 2023 and the meeting.
That's the meeting date. So, July 11th, 2023. The motion made by the chief, is there a second? It's second by Mr. St. Clair. Any discussion on the motion? Does any, none of those in favor? Signified by raising their hands, opposed? Okay, go forth and.
Did you do both, you did both of them, or just?
Just the first one, actually.
Yep.
Is, are there any, any additional facts that you need to present?
No, I mean, we just, we need to, we need to have Langley Cove under construction. We're actually, we're actually going to be here for a, basically, a temporary one next month, a temporary secondary access for Pogus Woods, because that one's already under construction. But the, once Langley Cove is under construction.
Can you do like the, the one paragraph explanation for the new members and members of the public that may not have understood what this?
Sorry, I don't have, I don't have a plan to put up in front of you.
It's okay.
But basically, what's happening is the secondary access for Pogus Woods goes through Langley down to Weers Boulevard, and the secondary access for Weers Bull, for Langley, I'm sorry, Pogus Woods through Langley, and Langley goes through Pogus Woods to White Oaks Road. So, they, it's interconnected secondary access points.
Right.
But Pogus Woods is under construction right now, and no matter what, we were going to need a secondary access point before Langley was done. So, we actually have a, have a temporary access, secondary access for Pogus down through Langley that just runs right along the sewer and water line, that's already installed and has a gravel road for maintenance. So, I mean, there's, there's already an in-place gravel road that's going to.
Terminated the pump house on the Boulevard?
Correct.
Okay.
And that'll always be there, even, even if, even if, even once the temporary agreement is over, there will always be a gravel road right through that area, so.
That's good. Okay.
But we need the extension for this, for Pogus Woods right now because we haven't actually started it, and that one lot in, off the end of Sarasota goes away and becomes, becomes the secondary access road.
These two developments abut each other.
Yep.
And Pogus Woods is, is the less steep of the two, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. All right, any other questions regarding the second one, which is the request to extend the boundary line adjustment?
And that'll, that'll probably end up just getting recorded, and we won't have to ask for this again.
Well, actually, it was in a, it was in an amendment to remove Lot 33. That's what we're looking at.
Correct.
So, they put the road through.
Yeah. I'll make that motion.
Yes. There's a motion from the chief. Is there a second?
Second.
From Charlie? All right, all those in favor of extending for, until July 11th, 2023? All those opposed? And it's unanimous? Thank you, Mr. Oki, as always.
Thank you very much.
It's good to see you.
You got anything else tonight?
Uh, let's see.
Get out early tonight.
So, can I see a show of hands for the number of people that are here for the 224 Endicott Street East? Most of you. Does, would the board have any objection to us moving that up? Is the, is the applicant here? Yeah, is the, you guys ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and maybe in the interest of getting some of these people out there to enjoy the post-storm air, I would, at this time, move 9.1 up. This is for a, first, we need an acceptance motion and then a public hearing. So, is the application in complete form and ready for appro, for acceptance?
It is ready for acceptance. Depends on what the applicant tells us tonight as to whether they are ready for approval or not. So, I will leave it at that.
Oh, okay. But it's, you have enough for the board to vote to accept the application?
Correct.
All right. Would anyone care to make such a motion? Chief, you're on a roll.
Aye.
Charlie, likewise, we have, just keep going, ditto, ditto.
Looking at each other.
We'll get through this, okay? All right. All those in favor of accepting this application signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? And it's also unanimous? Thank you very much. All right. So, the applicant's going to come up and explain the planning director's cryptic comment a moment ago. Depends on what we hear here tonight.
I have a plan I'm going to set up just for purposes.
Sure.
If there are questions from the planning board, we're going to be on the same page.
Yep. Can you set it up over that side? Isn't that where the camera is usually? Just don't block those two gentlemen in the nice suits there. They always get the best seats, you know, the front row. It's like being at Meadowbrook. What?
That was different from what we had last month.
That was an email.
So, for the record, by the way, we're referencing PL 2021-08SU amended one, amendment one, and 0021CUP. It's a wetland conditional use permit. And the proposal is to amend the site plan to add one duplex to the existing two duplexes We can be able to pick that up where they can't see it out there, can they?
Those are working now.
No? Technical difficulties. Please introduce yourself to the record and proceed.
Good evening. My name's Ian McGregor. I'm a project engineer with North Point Engineering. Unfortunately, Roland Manville had a medical emergency today, so hopefully he's recovering well in the hospital. He has his representative, Dave Plunkett, here with us tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Plunkett.
David Plunkett, representing the applicant, which is the Ram Claridan LLC. And as stated, Mr. Manville is undergoing emergency surgery at the moment.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. It was good, good that you were able to step up on short notice.
Yes, he drove up from Mass tonight, so it was very appreciated.
Well, go ahead, then.
So, tonight, we are here to seek approval from the planning board for a additional, or an amendment to the approved plan that was approved in 2021. In your packets, as well as on the board to my left, you have the additional building labeled units five and six that is being added to the amendment. In addition to the building and associated driveway, as well as improved drainage or stormwater management systems are part of the amendment. You, so, yep. The building would be served by the existing onsite utilities, as well as shared driveway entrance with the two existing and pre-approved buildings as well. So, no additional curb cuts or entrances on to Endicott Street are necessary. North Point has been made aware of problems that residents of the sundown condominium development have been experiencing. Once construction began on the previous two developments, and North Point has been working very closely with the city to ensure that the stormwater management system that incorporates not only the, the two existing buildings, but also the proposed building with the driveway will be able to sufficiently meet all of the town of Laconia requirements and standard engineering practices. Myself and Jeff Lewis, the principal engineer at North Point Engineering, were able to meet with Charles Mile, a board member for the condominium association, as well as Mark Granoff, the president of the board. We conducted a site walk, not only of the affected properties and some of the standing water issues that they've been having, but as well as the proposed development site that we were able to explain the final features for the stormwater management system and how that will work and incorporate itself into the land as it is out there right now. While we were out there, Mark and Jeff were walking around some of the other properties and noticing that the shoulders along Endicott Street are not maintained very well. We were following them down, and we were able to discover a large area of runoff that travels from Endicott Street onto the sundown property condominium. It was evident from gravel and outwash that that is a source of onsite water for those properties. And Mark and Charles both indicated that they've been in touch with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation to come out and meet with them and try to maintain the issues that they're having with regards to Endicott Street and stormwater flows onto the sundown condominium development. And as Dean had cryptically mentioned before, kind of the linchpin for the stormwater management system, as well as the development as we go, is a filling of a, I want to get the number correct, 702 square foot wetland complex. We've had the permit with the Department of Environmental Services for over a month now and been corresponding back and forth. DES has, until August 4th, to issue their ruling on the permit. A permit had been previously issued for up to 12, kind of, 12 units to be constructed on the site, and we're confident with the responses that we've been able to provide to DES, as well as the fact that our client is only looking to develop six of the maximum 12 units that are available to be developed. The permit is to be issued. However, we understand that if the planning board is not willing to issue or accept our plan, or approve our plan based on the condition of accepting or receiving this wetland permit, we'd be happy to come back next month and present as well. But we, it would be very nice to be able to come out of this meeting with a conditionally approved plan.
All right. Any questions from the applicant? Charlie?
Have you heard back from DOT?
I have not heard back from DOT, but I have not been the one in contact. Fortunately, this, the property that we're looking at developing here is not receiving any of the drainage issues that have been identified by Charles and Mark.
Any other questions? Mr. McMillian?
Thank you. So, is it your contention that the drainage along Endicott Road, and I know somebody, I saw a photograph of a blocked culvert, is it your contention that that is a major contributor of the standing water issues?
We have not done a full hydrologic study of Endicott Street. We know that it could be a potential source of stormwater that's bypassing that culvert, and that culvert, I'll turn to the drainage plan. So, that culvert is coming just down the road from our driveway, and if it was no longer clogged, it would be accepting stormwater runoff and directing it into the management, stormwater management system that we've designed. Our designs account for that culvert to be unclogged. So, if DOT were to come in and properly maintain that on a regular basis, any water that's upstream on that south side of Endicott Street would no longer be bypassing it and flowing down the hill, but coming on to the subject property and being captured in our stormwater management basins.
And your, your existing stormwater management system could handle that runoff if that pipe was unclogged?
Yes. Yeah, we, we assume proper maintenance of all infrastructure that's not on our property when we do these.
What is the overall slope of the property from right to left?
It slopes down, so the high point is on the right hand, or the left-hand side, and it slopes down to the right.
Okay, so, generally, then, sundown is downslope from this project?
Correct.
Okay.
When you look at that, you've got a corrugated plastic culvert running off there. That culvert is exposed, that's been washed out, and is exposed probably 10 foot into the property.
Yes.
So, very obviously, the drainage system is not working.
Yeah, that, that culvert has been put there as a temporary measure during construction. I believe Roland was installing landscaping, so he wanted to be able to have a way to access the landscaping with his equipment. It is a structure that if you, is not shown to be maintained in our final design plan, so that will be loamed and seeded and removed upon final completion.
All right.
So, there'll be, there'll be a concrete head wall there that accepts?
Correct.
Okay.
If I may?
Sure, certainly.
Thank you. I'm looking at some photographs I think were submitted by the Butters, and this appears to be standing water. Is that correct in these photos?
Yeah, I, I saw those photos, and it looked very similar to what the, the project manager for this. for this particular project and I saw when we were out there with the condominium board president.
So would you, in your, is the stormwater management operating properly? Or are there some issues that can be mitigated here to breakfast?
I don't know if Charles and Mark are in the audience. Oh, yeah. So when, you know, Jeff and I were out on site, we were expecting to go out there and see washed out gullies and dirt strewn throughout the backyards and, and clear signs of erosion occurring from the subject, or from this property flowing downstream. And we were honestly confused when we came out there. It, it, from the pictures, there, there is no debris in that standing water area. There is no significant signs of erosion. There are the, the tractor marks from the landscaping equipment, but it, without a further analysis, I, there is no definitive source for that water. And one of the parts that baffles me the most is that it, it appears to be in the, the high points in the yard and not necessarily the, the low spots, which is where you would assume water to accumulate.
Any other?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Taylor, who you met earlier, and I went out to the site, I believe it was the end of May, we saw similar puddles of water collected that you see in these pictures. If you look at some of these pictures, you can partially see the, the slope that is on the Sundown condominium property that is mostly mulch. It's been covered with mulch to prevent erosion. As the applicant has stated, we did, at that time as well, we did not see any signs of erosion coming down that slope. So there was, the only, the only thing that, that got messed up in that, in that bed of mulch was Taylor and I walking around to the condominium association, sorry if we left footprints, but it is our opinion, and we have talked with a couple of, of other third-party people that are not involved with the project, and it is, it is the planning department's opinion that the water that's being experienced in the backyards of, of some of the Sundown condominiums is seepage of groundwater. It is not stormwater runoff per se. And, and our regulations only pertain to stormwater runoff, i.e. surface runoff. We have take, taken great pains with the applicant to have them revise their stormwater management, i.e. the surface stormwater management, so that it is not going down that slope. And we don't, it could be a little bit at this point in time, but at the, at the, at the end, when the project gets done with the improvements that they're going to do, it should alleviate. So it is, it's our opinion, and this is seepage, groundwater seepage from, from beneath the ground and it's coming up. And there's, there's two data points concerning that that are contradictory. And so I will tell you what the contradiction is and, and then, and there is no definitive resolution in my mind, anyway. So we do have a 2016 satellite picture, which does show some accumulation of water in the same spots, not to the same extent that you see in these pictures, but I'm not sure exactly what month the satellite pictures were taken. So on the, on the other hand, the homeowners in, in Sundown contend that this is a relatively new phenomenon that has occurred since construction has started at, at the adjacent development.
This stormwater management plan that we approved for the original two unit, two buildings?
Yes.
Was that sufficient to prevent any runoff from the subject property to Sundown?
In hindsight, I would say probably not.
Okay.
But there was the, the added feature of the, of the four-unit development, which is currently there, has the use of the little wetland that they're going to be filling in to try to capture some of their stormwater, okay? I, in talking with, again, with a couple of third-party people, it is possible, and they haven't done an extensive study, so they're, you know, they're just doing their, you know, educated opinion, you know, off the top of their, their, their head, but their opinion would be that that wetland could be contributing to the groundwater source, could be, but not necessarily. So with the, with the new plan, with the little wetland going away and the diversion of all of their surface stormwater, including the stuff that's supposed to be going under that culvert, under 11B and into their property, is now being directed by pipe to the rear of the property to a detention pond. So I, I think when that is accomplished, that it would, would, it would take care of the surface stormwater.
Who would verify whether this is groundwater or runoff accumulation? Would that be a soil scientist? Geologist, hydrogeologist, procticianer, whatever?
One of those for sure. I don't, I don't, I don't know what would be the best profession necessarily to determine that.
Okay, so is this, is this ledgy property? Is there a lot of ledge out there? Does he have to do blasting and moving?
I'm, I'm unsure as to the amount of blasting that had to occur, but there are several boulders. I'm, I'm from the Midwest originally and I've only been in New England for about five years, so I'm, I'm learning about all the different types of ledge that exist.
So we call it ledge even if it's a piece of breadrock from here to Belmont, for one thing.
Right, yeah.
And, but the problem is that, you know, the ledge, it was there straight by the glaciers. Material was left between where there's really no way for the groundwater to get through the ledge if it's at an angle like this. That's why I brought it up.
Right, I, I would, I would describe it as, as significantly weathered bedrock, whether or not blasting had to occur, or if you had to come in with an excavator to move car-sized boulders. But you, you go out there and you can, you can see exposed ledge and boulders, yes.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we have the public hearing, since the public is here and anxious to speak? And then we'll ask the applicant to answer their questions at the end, or not directly, but I mean respond. And then we'll deliberate and see whether it's ready to go forward. And I'm hearing a willingness from the applicant, if necessary, to follow up with the hydrological issues that we've discussed.
Yeah.
Right? Okay. So we're going to open the public hearing on this matter at 7:30, 2:00 PM. Let's start with the butters. Are there any butters here that would like to be heard regarding this? Please come right up to the mic and, and state your name and address for the record, if you would, please, sir.
My name is Charles Mylee, M-I-H-L-E. I'm a board member of Sundown condominium. I don't know how much material you all have, but I'll be referring to this map. This is the biggest I have.
Is it the same one that's up?
Yeah, well, I want to, I have, we, we are the pink areas.
Okay.
Also, I'll be referring to several sets of pictures, which you have in your files. The first set is the ones you have already from the zoning board meeting of the ponding of water behind buildings 63 and 59.
Okay.
Okay? And then I also have some pictures I submitted yesterday of the rivulets along the shoulder of 11B. And I have some good news about this, so stay tuned. All right. If you'll indulge me for just a minute, I want to give a, a bit of a history of where we are, where we've come from. Going back to the spring and summer of 2021, the Sundown condominium association has spent considerable time, effort, and money trying to mitigate the water damage to the areas behind buildings 63 and 59, and possibly into the foundations themselves. Last summer, as a member of the board of directors of Sundown, I spent time visiting with city officials in the Laconia Department of Public Works, that would be Krista Larson, Taylor Dagel, who was just up here, and the New Hampshire DOT, Samantha Feifield, either in their offices or we all walked the site at 224 Endicott East on several occasions. All these officials were sincere in their desire to listen, to show what has been done already with drainage mitigation, and to want to figure out what to do next. I appreciated that level of concern from them. Again, this year, starting in the spring of 2022, even larger areas of water ponding and potential foundation infiltration were created behind buildings 63 and 59. I began the process of contacting, again, city and state officials all over, again, even meeting with the new face of Rob Merle in the planning office. The Laconia Planning Department and the DPW showed me new drainage plans for the 222-4 development and for him, if developer was to build the third building. In my opinion, we can see what's going to happen down the road as the developer exits the development after the third building is finished and all the units are sold. A small owners' association for those six condos will form with little financial assets to help us with our groundwater issues in the future. Let's look back at what's happened. Point one, the zoning board of adjustments on June 21st looked at clause C in the application that the applicant submitted, which says, "The requested use will not overload any public water system, nor will there be any significant increase in stormwater runoff onto adjacent property or streets." It's that second clause which we directed our, our comments to last meeting, "Nor will there be any significant runoff, increase in stormwater runoff onto adjacent property or streets." If the developer has not met this requirement, shouldn't that approval of the ZBA been delayed? No, it was approved with a suggestion from the ZBA. The developer and/or engineering firm meet with the Sundown folks, which they did. Point two, it appears the ZBA passed the problem over to the planning department for its July 12th meeting. No legal pressure, nothing perhaps, but just a hope and a prayer. Solution, we want a fully functional drainage system. According to the engineers for the 224 project, their complete surface water drainage mitigation plan is not hooked up as yet. Gutters need to be installed, downpipes need to be hooked up to the undersurface foundation piping system, et cetera. We want a proven plan. Based on the lack of success to date, we are concerned about the future. Phase one appears not to have been completed, so how can the planning board approve phase two, the building of a third building? Point three, according to the engineers from North Point Engineering, Jeff Lewis and Ian McGregor, as a result of the visit on July 1st, 2022, Jeff felt a contributing cause for the ponding was the runoff along shoulders of 11B. To help deal with that problem, Mr. Lewis proposed going to Mr. Mainville, the developer, to reconfigure the drain along the northern side of 11B, going into his drainage catch basin to capture more of the street runoff along that northern shoulder. The question is, how do we guarantee Mr. Mainville will do this? And didn't hear it mentioned tonight. Point four, referring to the planning board staff review for this meeting, in section one, subsection A, they mentioned an agreement between 224 Endicott and Sundown condominium association over the maintenance of the sewer connection. The agreement shall include a provision for a sewer collection system operation and a maintenance plan and annual maintenance reporting. Does the DPW assist us in this formatting such a plan? It seems to us the project cannot go forward without an agreement in place prior to approval. Last point, Sundown condominium association would like to ask for some type of written multi-year performance bond through the developer's insurance company to guarantee a financial commitment to remedy future drainage sewage problems affecting Sundown's property, holding R.A.M. Clarndon, Mr. Manville's development company, financially responsible. Can the city assist us in this matter? In conclusion, as city of Laconia taxpayers, we want their 224 Endicott water drainage issues to no longer be ours at Sundown condominiums. We don't want the surface water to come sheeting into our property. And quite frankly, this is a new situation that has never been this serious. I've been there for eight years and satellite picture aside, I have never seen it as bad as it is. Just pushing the water away from 224 Endicott toward other residences, ourselves, or even Ashley Ave, may not be the solution. Management of water has to be proved as a demonstrated function of any agreement. Instead, take the surface water off Endicott property in a way that guarantees the end or reduction of our drainage water issues at Sundown condominiums. And legal assurances, the developer of 224 Endicott will be financially responsible for present and future drainage costs to Sundown condominiums and their residents. Least you think of us as being demanding, we look at it as being persistent, being cooperative. We've met with engineers from North Point Engineering and learned a lot of their hopes for a workable solution. In the end, it must be proven to work. We'd like to report, we were notified this morning, this persistence has helped us to get New Hampshire DOT to put the improvement of the shoulder runoff along the north side of 11B on their August work schedule. A small victory.
More than a small victory.
Thank you. I agree. I was being modest. In closing, we sincerely hope the city of Laconia operates with us in helping to reduce and/or eliminate the water issues affecting Sundown condominiums. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mylee. Is there, could you just clarify whether the city has a role to play in the, the runoff situation as it relates to the roads, or is it just DOT?
Prior to this, this morning's phone call, I was going to ask the city to, to use your, your cooperative nature with state agencies to help us.
Right.
And, and twist somebody's arm and ring somebody's bell. In all modesty, I think we've done that already, and that's a good thing. And they've been very helpful and they...
You said phase one was not completed. Can you explain that?
Well, I, I guess that was just my labeling of the, these drainage, these drainage plans prior to even the thought of constructing the third unit, third building, weren't working. Mr. McGregor may not have known this, but when we first arrived at the site last spring, there was a big drainage pipe coming off, taking surface water off the property and just literally shooting it out at a, at a horizontal plane into the woods right behind our buildings. When we walked the site with Taylor and Krista, they saw this and said immediately, it needs to be changed to a 90-degree turn bend, and least... to be changed to a ninety-degree turn bend, and at least it'll be directed downward. So right away, that wasn't working. And so...
Was that a temporary fixture during construction of phase one?
Is he on here?
No?
No.
Okay.
I don't know if it was or not.
The staff is saying no.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Miley? It was an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Are there any other rebuttors that would like to be heard? There's another masked man there.
Take your own, gather all my stuff.
Good evening. My name's Mark Ranoff. I'm the president of the Sundown Condominium Association. I guess the guinea pig that took the job, and I am a layperson. I'm a retired engineer, but not a civil engineer, mechanical engineer. I want to thank Charles for all the tremendous work he's done and all the hours he's put into this. I just want to point to this plan right here. There is this existing pipe that runs under eleven B.
Mm-hmm.
And that pipe is the one that is being bypassed because of the rivulets running on the shoulder that's not improved, and it's blocked, about three-quarters blocked. That pipe should be a significant help to control water coming from the high grade here, sloping across the road, and going into what used to be a wetland or storage area, volume of rock and plants. You know, as a layperson, you put, you know, I don't know how many, fifty, two-hundred square feet of concrete in this area, and clear all the foliage, for station, there's going to be an impact, okay? You don't have to be a civil engineer to understand that. So with that pipe not functioning, and the water's trying to get down the hill, and if anybody's going out there and driving around Ashley Drive and down Pendleton, down by, you look at all of these pipes, there's one property that has two eighteen-inch diameter pipes that run to bring the water down to the lake, or manage it through all of the changes in grade. That's an important pipe that's not doing anything right now. And, you know, so this water, we went and walked it, is running, sheeting across the road, making rivulets right along our fence, that plastic fence that I rebuilt last year. And you can see all the silt under the fence, soda bottles and so forth that are washing down the road. So, you know, I don't know how we can, you know, knowing how integral all of these pieces of the water management are, the culverts, the big pipes carrying it down on change in grade and so forth in storage, that we could say this system is working yet if we're not fully hooked up to it, and seeing how it really should operate. So that's one point I wanted to make with that, just to reinforce what Charles had said. So I would hope that we would expect that, you know, engineers at the city level would, and I'm sure some of you are engineering types or engineers by trade, would review and see that this is a robust plan that's going to handle water properly, not just for the benefit of Sundown as a butters, but the Ashley Drive folks as well, because someone put a lot of thought into that flow of water down that grade. You can see it. And we would like to, you know, see that this review of the plan is robust, and that the performance is at least validated by some demonstration of functionality. So I'm hopeful that the DOT's assistance in clearing up the shoulder, improving that, and getting that pipe connected will help. That would certainly lead towards where we think we see the silt coming in behind the sixty-three building, where that's, where it maybe in the 2016 pictures you saw, might have shown it there. But certainly, the water behind the fifty-nine building, prior to this construction effort, did not exist. We didn't have people complaining about mosquitoes, and you can't step off the dock because you're, the deck, rather, you sink into the mud and so forth. So that's a new manifestation of the recent changes. So we hope that the city will look really hard and closely at this to make sure the plan is good and that it's going to perform, because we don't want to have, I certainly don't want to be reading all these emails about upset people can't use their back, you know, garden area or seating areas because of the standing water and the bugs and all that. So that's just a couple of points I wanted to add to that. And as Ian had indicated, we had a very cordial meeting with Ian and Jeff, Charles and I. We spent about two hours walking around, climbing around everywhere, up and down the hill. And I know that Jeff, who couldn't be here, he had indicated that the first building, the one that's closest to us, it's a large structure, lot of roof area, zero gutters are hooked up yet, none at all. And there is a management system in the ground, buried piping and probably perf pipe and rock and all that, to carry the roof load into this water management system. It isn't there yet, so it can't function properly if that's missing and the other roadway water not being managed. So, you know, we know that that hopefully will continue to be completed so that we can start to see a demonstration this is going to work. So anyhow, I just wanted to add that, those couple of points there. And I want to thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
And I'm not sure who to put this to. The DOT, I think you said DOT gave you a date when they're going to meet with you, or not? In August?
It's on their work, it's on their work schedule for, he said about a month from now. She said about a month, in August. Borrowing any, they said they only have one excavator to do this work, so somehow there's a major storm that washes out a road. We're stuck.
I was just hoping it'd be before our next meeting.
Well, there's a couple of excavators in that lot next to my house. Maybe you could borrow one of those.
There you go.
Is this, now, is this, you're talking about repairing the culvert that he was just referring to, right?
Goes across eleven B.
That's on the...
It conveys some of the water across to the outside of the lot.
They aren't scheduled to work on the south side, but they will clean out the culvert. And they will fix with a large, large rock in grading the north side.
Will that go a long way towards correcting the problems that you're experiencing?
We hope, but the thing is, this runoff has existed. I've been there since 2014, and the runoff has always been that way, poorly managed. And we've never had a problem with the ponding and the standing water. So somehow the system was able to absorb it, and perhaps we reached a tipping point.
With the foundation.
Foundation.
There was a period of development in the city where I don't think that things were all that stringent, and I think Route eleven A, eleven B is a perfect example. That's a steep area where a lot of development has occurred, so every one compounds in the other. Would this DOT repair, is it fair to say that would be an integral part of the applicant's erosion control plan, stormwater runoff plan?
Right, responding to that.
Yeah.
Like I had mentioned before, our assumption is a tall stormwater infrastructure upstream that's flowing on to our site, off into our management.
Come on up. I'm getting a little deep.
Yeah, thank you for coming. So just to respond to that one point, the assumption when we design a stormwater management system, is we go and we look at USGS, Geological Survey Maps, big quad, quadrangle, five-foot, ten-foot contour maps, and we look at, this is our property, and where is all the water coming from upstream? And then we go and we drive around to look where all the culverts are. And we don't necessarily get out and examine each one, but we make sure that they're all mapped and we know if there's a ridge, which side the water is flowing to. But our assumption is always that if there is a culvert, it is fully functioning and well-maintained. So that way, our system is designed to facilitate the maximum capacity that it would see based on the geography of the area that's upstream of it.
But is the existing stormwater management system on site right now
Right.
working correctly?
The existing? No. So the, the plan has not been finished.
So, Rich?
Well, I'll go back to that piece of corrugated culvert I was talking about. Correct. That is sticking up probably a foot above grade right now.
Yes.
The inverse of that. So unless you've got a foot of water, there's nothing flowing into your stormwater. It's coming all down the side of eleven B. I live just south of there, and when I drive up there, it is...
I'm, I'm, I want to make sure we're speaking about, because, so I know Roland's been putting a ten-foot piece of pipe right here.
That is correct. And that pipe is, you guys got five binders all around it?
Yes.
And it's, it's down, that pipe is up that high off the ground.
Right. So as Mark and Charles mentioned, the buildings are not complete. Downspouts have not been hooked up into the drainage system. The landscaping has not been completed. The, you know, I haven't spoke with Roland extensively in terms of what percentage of completion he is on, but he expressed to us that he's not looking to have anybody occupy the units relatively soon. So in terms of completion of the stormwater infrastructure, it is not at 100% complete, but neither is the rest of the property.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that before we go back to the public hearing. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Another question, Rich?
Dean, I know prior to the original application, Ashley Drive had concerns, because they had runoff off this property down under there. Has there been any further issues with Ashley through DBW?
No, we haven't, we have not heard from anybody from Ashley Drive. But you're correct, they did express concern when this was originally proposed, that they were getting stormwater in their backyards, you know, two years ago.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Why don't you take another seat?
Thank you.
Any other butters here that wish to be heard? Please, come on up and put your name and address for the record, please.
Excuse me. Howard Richards from eighty-four Ashley Drive. I am directly downhill from the property. I believe it's this property to here. And there is a lot of runoff. It is ledge. You asked earlier if there was a lot of ledge there. It is. And my concern, or what I hope the developer considers, is that retention pond that they're going to build, that's going to be just directly above me. And if that retention pond loses water into the ledge behind my house, there will be a lot of extra runoff down there onto Ashley Drive, which last year, the city completely dug the pavement up and completely repaved it. It's all brand new and nice, and like to keep it that way.
Did it handle this afternoon's thunderstorm? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. There wasn't a lot of water, but it was very short. But you add one of those to spring runoff, and it doesn't handle it.
Well, that's like pure runoff, because it comes down so fast, it really can't be absorbed, right?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
But I'd just like to say that in that plan, that they make sure that they look at my property as well.
Yes, understood. The general idea is that we expect the developers will develop a plan to ensure that the development does not increase runoff to adjoining properties. That's a principle that we always try to maintain. Yes, Rich?
Dean, another question. Wasn't there a detention pond planned in the original runoff?
You mean the original approval?
The original approval?
I think there was, yes.
I think there was supposed to be a detention pond down in that area. And I could be wrong, but I thought I remember that that was originally designed...
No, I don't think so. The, the original twelve-unit plan, which was many years ago, which has expired obviously, did develop a detention pond in the, kind of in the center of the, of the, of the project.
Why don't we have staff look?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think there was a, you know, the, the, there's a, and there is at this moment, a very small detention pond, basically in the apex of where the driveway is for the existing unit three and four, and the, and the proposed five and six. But there's a wetland there, but to the right of, right of that, there's a little detention pond that was built. I mean, it's, when I say little, I mean five, six feet round. And then the, the water from that went directly to the east and was, as has been mentioned, was just going to be an open, an open pipe which would flow down the drain. And we have made them eliminate that.
Okay.
It hasn't been done yet. But the plan is to eliminate that prospect, that type, part of the system, and direct all of the stormwater by pipe down to the proposed...
I think the directors' introductory comments are not quite so cryptic anymore. We understand. Is there anything else you want to add, sir?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other butters that wish to be heard on this one? Any members of the public? We don't have our Zoom tonight, so last call. Yes, you want to add one more thing?
I do.
I bet.
Thank you. With regard to groundwater, we're keenly aware that there's a groundwater issue. And I've spoken with Ridge Mark at DES and about groundwater mitigation, and could they send a technician or a hydrologist out to the site to look and help us? And he basically said, we're kind of under the threshold. We're, it's an eighty-seven thousand square foot property, a little over two acres, and that doesn't meet their threshold of a hundred thousand square foot to send somebody out to look at it. So we're kind of up the creek on this one. We were trying to get some, some more expertise involved.
You're kind of down the creek, but...
You're right.
That's right. Okay. All right. Anyone else? We'll close the public hearing at eight oh one. I would say to the board, well, let's, let Dean make recommendation here. Do you think we should set this up for...
So, yeah, based on what we've heard tonight, first of all, let me, I would, we are going to make some suggestions, not suggestions, I'm going to tell you some things that we would include in a future staff, you know, recommendation that would be part of the plan. Obviously, they need to get their wetland permit to fill that wetland so they can complete their drainage system. So that's, that's a requirement that should be forthcoming, but it is a requirement. The other thing is that we would want to see a pretty substantial planting of plants along the easterly slope, which is, which previous to development was scrub brush and that kind of stuff. There were a few smaller trees, but, and obviously they're gone now. But a replanting would be very, could go a long way to help suck up some of that groundwater that maybe is now sheeting down on ledge or, or hard pack that's there. We certainly will require all of the foundation drains and the gutter system to be hooked up to the new storm drain system, so all that water is going to go to their detention pond. We have spoken with them in the past about the size of that detention pond. It may need to be a little bit bigger. I do want to reiterate that. I, I do want to reiterate that. It is a construction site. It is under construction, uh, building, uh, units one and two are pretty close to finish. Units three and four are still being built. And, um, so I, I do, I do get the expectation, you know, I do get the expectation that stormwater system should be working, but it's still a, it's a, it's a, it's a construction site. It's still in progress.
Are there temporary erosion control measures?
Yes, we have temporary erosion controls, yes. So I, I would, you know, I, I think we have to be, and I completely understand the frustration, but I think we have to be a, a little bit realistic of where we are in the timeline at, at the moment. I, I would suggest to the planning board, uh, that, uh, we probably should have a third-party study to confirm, um, an official third-party study as opposed to the couple of informal things that we've done, uh, to confer, to review the proposed, uh, stormwater maintenance.
And groundwater.
And to kind of see what's going on with the groundwater, yes. And, and I, you know, we can do that and of course, um, it would be the city hiring that and at the developer's expense. So we would...
Would that include the sewer connection also?
The sewer connection, um, I'll get to that in just a moment, if you don't mind. I do want to state something that, um, is obvious to staff. I, I'm not sure that it's going to be obvious to everybody, so I, I want to make this statement. The third building is going to be the catalyst for getting the site improved. The, the, the project is approved for the four units and the two buildings. It is kind of what it is and we are working with the developer to try to improve the drainage system and, and they are willing to do that because they, they do recognize that there, there are issues. But to have a, any shot at a, a, a complete solution here, it is the construction of the third building that is driving the improvements to the stormwater system that, that needs to happen. And so we, you know, if, if you deny the third building, that doesn't mean that we stop everything, but there's, there's only just so much that we could do.
Well, what if we table it?
Yeah. I, I, I think you should do that, yes. And, and we will work on these issues and whether we can get the third-party review done before the next meeting or not, I don't know. But we would incorporate the other things that I've talked about into future conditions of approval if, if they don't incorporate them into their plan, uh, by thing.
The applicant, um, catching all this, we're talking about basically taking another month to get this, uh, the soil science done. Is that something realistic? I mean, you've still got a permit to go forward with the construction and you have to take temporary erosion measures while you're doing that. You've, uh, with the assistance of the, uh, butters, got DOT's commitment to come out and work on that culvert. A lot of things could change in the next thirty days.
Yes. In, in light of events today, um, we're definitely more amenable to delaying the, or tabling the amendment, uh, approval process. Um, and it will give us a chance to, to meet with Charles and Mark and any other of the neighbors to, um, confirm, because like Dean was saying, it, it is an active construction site and anything that we can do onsite to help the butters with the stormwater issues they're having is what we want to do. So we, we, we're not against or, um, would protest any sort of tabling to come back next month.
Hopefully, hopefully your colleague will recover quickly for...
Yes.
And be able to come to that.
I'm not sure if, uh, this will be able to be done by the August second meeting because this meeting is late in July and it basically only gives them three weeks to get this third-party review done. So it's probably going to have to be tabled to the September.
I think we can only table to the next meeting under Robert's rules, but that doesn't mean we can't make another motion if we have to.
But I think it would be... It's, it is highly unlikely to achieve all of this in that timeframe. But I think it would be good to schedule it for the August second meeting. And maybe we just do a quick touch basis to see where we are type thing.
And they could have continued by agreement if there's, if the, the end is in sight, but it's not here, right?
Move it on to September again, yeah.
Yes.
And as it sounds like, you know, you haven't completed phase one anyway, so, um, and you have, uh, a well-organized and informed, uh, butters who are working cooperatively with you. So that's, that's a, that's a real plus.
Yeah, we, we want to be good neighbors.
Well, that's, that's what we, we expect from all the developers that come before us.
So if I may address, uh, Rich's question about the sewer, so, um...
You're talking sanitary sewer?
Yes. There was an existing sewer manhole that, that's on the Sundown condominium property, which when the twelve-unit development was proposed several years ago, they were going, they had the agreement to hook into that. They, when this, when the sanitary sewer for, for this project, uh, for the four units and, and for the six units, the sewer system's put in and it hooks into that existing manhole. There needs to be a cooperative agreement between the two condominium associations to, so that they know who's going to take care of what down, down the future. If there is a problem somewhere in the sewer line on the Sundown property and there's no agreement with the other condominium association, they're on their own. And, but the problem could very well have been created by...
Correct.
Uphill. So, um, and, um, as you know, there have been some changes in sewer regulations in term of maintenance issues and policies. And, um, this particular, um, item and... This particular item was driven by, uh, Public Works because they are implementing their, over the next couple of years, they will be implementing, in, implementing, sorry, their program, um, that, that all of the sewer, private sewer systems in the city will need to have an, an inspection process and a maintenance plan. And, and many of these private sewer systems already have that, so, you know, but some of them do not. And I do not know the status of whether Sundown is one of those or not. But this agreement is really for the protection of, of both parties because stuff could come down from this new development that causes problems in this Sundown, the pipes that are under the Sundown property and, and, and certainly that, you know, um, Sundown does not want to have to be, you know, 100% responsible for fixing that if they're not the source of the problem. So there needs to be some type of an agreement. Highly recommend to everyone that there be an agreement between the two parties. But the, the fact that inspection and maintenance issues of private sewer systems is going to happen regardless of this agreement, but that it's going to happen anyway because the city is implementing in behest of, of state and, and federal regulations that are becoming more stringent as we go along here. So another reason to have this, this agreement.
Who wants to speak?
Well, I, I, I am, uh, contract law is, is not my forte, but I have a lawyer.
I mean, and we understand and appreciate the need for the sewer line to operate properly. And certainly, we have language that would propose to incorporate into the condominium bylaws that, you know, there's an ordinance within the city that specifies the responsibility of the owner in terms of maintenance, upkeep, repairs and everything else. And certainly we would be not hesitant at all and incorporate specific reference to this obligation that exists, but just to memorialize it in the written condominium documents. The only concern being when talking about the agreement with another party though, that then that puts, you know, shifts a potential burden, uh, you know, relative to if the other side says, no, I don't want to deal with you, you then, um, you know...
It's an off-site feature, in other words.
Right, right.
It's not going to be on the property of the condominium association.
So, so certainly, you know, without question, we're very much open to inclusive, you know, language to be included in the, in the condominium documentation to memorialize all the obligations and duties of the owners of the property to maintain, repair and, uh, keep that sewer line, uh, relative to their use of it as per the terms of the city ordinance.
But maybe agreement is not necessarily in a legal sense what's necessary because certainly Sundown's condominium association could adopt an identical, uh, language, shall we say?
Yeah.
Acknowledging that there's a shared responsibility there?
Yeah.
And making clear whose responsibility it is to maintain it.
And I, I think that the concept of having an understanding between the two adjoining properties is appropriate, but to have as a condition saying, oh, but you've got to get them to agree to something that we're going to put in here, I think creates a problem. But certainly, we understand, appreciate and accept this responsibility, but it's just the issue in terms of how it's, how it's structured.
Sure.
And if I may, I'm not sure of the, the legal ramifications or implications, but in, in the nonprofit community, these sorts of, um, mutual agreements that are not dependent or provide any sort of power sharing or structure, uh, were referred to as memorandums of understanding. And I just, I, I like that language in terms of being able to have a document that shows two parties of, uh, equal representation maintaining a, uh, critical piece of infrastructure.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Stacy?
Dean, Conservation was wondering why the six units were not presented to them and only the, or maybe you know?
Um, uh, my, my understanding in, in speaking with Roland was, um, uh, wanting to begin construction as soon as possible, but, uh, when we started design on these units, uh, the original four, uh, there was a soon coming or, uh, a, a, a change to town ordinances resulting in a, uh, difference in whether it's the, the way it was written or the, um, definition provided by town for the, the wetland setbacks. So that had changed. And with that change in the amendment, it made the, um, third building then able to be, uh, constructed after that. So with the, um, I'm trying to, I remember Dean, we talked about that with Dean when we were out there, uh, and it was a change in the town ordinances that allowed, um, the third building to be constructed. Uh, the first two were subject to that ordinance and did not allow the, the third one to be built at that time.
So when they originally were approved of the four units, um, uh, there were buffers applied to both wetlands, the one that's going to remain and then the little one that's going to be filled. As he said, we have since updated the ordinance and smaller wetlands no longer have a buffer applied to them. The wetland itself is still protected, but the buffer is, is no longer applied. So in this instance, it is strictly a DES function because they've applied to fill the smaller wetland. If DES approves the, the fill permit, then there is no wetland for us to consider.
Got you. Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted an answer for them.
Thank, thank you for that clarification.
All right. So what...
Can I just add something quick?
Yes, Brett.
Um, the stormwater plan. I know, uh, there are all kinds of softwares that can do it, runoff coefficients, this and that and everything else. You can plan it for a fifty-year storm event, hundred-year storm event, biblical storm event. If the problem is the groundwater coming up through capillary action, stormwater plans aren't going to do anything.
Right.
I get a vernal pool across the street from my house almost every year and it plays a big part with a, a bunch of different, um, contributing factors. Some springs, we haven't seen it at all. In the fifteen years that I've been there, probably ten of them, it comes up and it comes up once mud season starts and it sticks around long enough for the mosquitoes to breed and then by the beginning of June, it's gone. And if that's what's happening here in these pictures, the best stormwater management plan isn't going to help that. I, I just wanted to see that. And that's why I think it's definitely necessary for the third-party review to establish where that problem's coming from. Of course, if it is, and it's kind of a vernal pool, they're going to go out there now and it's going to be dry and, uh...
Well, it's been photographed.
It was, it was delineated, uh, the, almost two years ago now. It was not designated a vernal pool. It, 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 it was just a small wetland. But I hear you.
Right. Well, notwithstanding that, if the, if the proposed project is not going to affect that water, that, that standing water, if it indeed is a groundwater feature, then the, what obligation does the applicant have to, to correct that? It's, it's an off-site pre-existing condition, right? All right. Well, many questions need to be answered, I think. Well, what is the board's pleasure? Shall we table this matter till the next meeting? The recommendation?
Second.
Motion by Mr. St. Clair, second by Mr. Bell, uh, Bellow. Is there any, uh, further discussion? I'm sensing none. All those in favor signify by raising their hands. And opposed? And it's unanimous? And good luck. As has been pointed out, it's going to be a short month. You're not getting the full thirty days, but...
Yes.
An update at least. Are the, is, is, are the rest of you people here on one forty-one Water Street by any chance? Is there anybody here on that one? Would the board have any? If we just zip, zip right into that one? Is that all right? Okay. That being said, no, no objection from the, uh, other members of the board. They will indulge the chair in, uh, moving item nine point two. Up next, PL twenty twenty-two dash zero zero five seven SP and zero zero five eight CUP PZ.
Performance zoning.
Ah, these acronyms. You got to send us a list. One forty-one Water Street, proposal to redevelop the site for fourteen-unit apartment building with associated parking and drainage improvements. We need to start with acceptance, I believe. Is the application complete and ready for acceptance?
Yes.
All right. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept, Mr. McWilliams. Second by Mr. Bellow, wasn't? All right. Any discussion? Sensing none. All is in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Application's been accepted. You may proceed, Mr. Howard, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. Peter Howard from Dubois and King, uh, here, also with Ted Roy, property owner and, uh, operator of the Water Street Cafe. We have to go through the performance zoning?
Uh, yes, please.
All right. We have, uh, as part of the application, uh, submitted a, uh, conditional use permit for performance zoning on, uh, uh, three particular issues, a setback, uh, along this eastern side. Also, uh, the setback of the proposed driveway... proposed driveway. That's the existing conditions plan. This is, just to get oriented, this is Fair Street, Water Street. The existing Water Street Cafe is shown on the plan, but it's in this area. The police station is on this side, the old Stratum Tire, downtown Jim, Buie Garell's across the street. So I think you're familiar with the site. But on the performance zoning, we're, we've submitted that for three items. One is density. This site would support 10 units based on current zoning. We're asking for 14 under the performance zoning. We're also asking for a setback from five feet, which is required in this zone, to three and a half feet along this easterly side. And also a set, the driveway setback from an intersect, intersecting roads, required to be 50 feet. We're asking that it be allowed to be 46 and a half. We can't quite push this driveway. It moves everything further because this driveway has to line up with the center of the parking lot. So we're asking for those. In support of that, creating a well-planned integrated development include a mixture of land uses compatible with the adjacent parcels that will enhance the overall community. Again, it's a mixed use. There are residents down Water Street, but also that, many different, different uses in the area. But this project includes residential housing that's going to be affordable. The site design fits into the adjacent parcels and overall community. Mitigating negative impacts on traffic. It's our belief that the traffic impacts and public utilities, municipal services will be similar to that which is existing today. The existing site has 26 parking spaces. We're proposing 26 parking spaces. Maybe a little bit different time-wise, but basically the same impact, limiting the third criteria, limiting new access points. The existing site has two access points and we're proposing two access points. Won't be any change on that. Number four says providing transition between existing and proposed land uses which will protect residential abutters. The proposed use is residential, but we actually have no direct residential abutters, so that none of them will, would be impacted. Number five, providing high-quality site planning and architectural landscaping, site design that meets design standards in the Site Plan Review Committee. We have the architecture there. I think you'll agree that would be pleasant in the area. And then we're providing landscaping, trees, rain gardens, and all the green is the lawman's seed around the proposed building. Also, number six says minimizing views of large parking lots from the existing street. Well, we do have the street trees to help in that, but also would like to mention that the existing site plan has 26 parking spaces, I mentioned, but it consumes about 19,000-plus square feet of pavement. We're proposing 26 spaces with less than half of that amount of pavement, so we're consolidating the amount of pavement, providing the same amount of parking. You can see the, this is the parking area for the 26 spaces on the proposed. This is all the pavement for the 26 spaces on the existing. So I think we're making a big improvement on that. And then seven says creating pedestrian and vehicular links to abutting properties. We have designed it so that our sidewalks connect to the existing sidewalk along Water Street, and they also connect to an existing sidewalk that goes next to what used to be the skateboard park. It's a sidewalk there. We're connecting to that, which would bring it out onto Fair Street. And the final criteria, establishing open space and pedestrian amenities, including usable common land and wide sidewalks. As he said, we're, we are providing the sidewalks for the pedestrian traffic on the property and also ceiling, porch areas. You can see this, these areas out here will all be open outside the door. It's a walkway. It's not really a deck, but it is some bit of outdoor space for the, so that's the criteria for the performance zoning.
That faces the outdoor parking spaces. What does that face? That face Water Street or the Stratum Tire?
Yeah, here's Fair Street. This would be facing.
Facing that way.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, should I wait for a decision on this performance zoning? What should we do?
They did do the conceptual a couple of months ago.
Mm-hmm.
Which was approved by the board. I think you could incorporate the approval for performance zoning under the main motion if you so choose.
That's not usually a step, if I remember correctly.
Does not need to be, no.
Okay.
Okay. Let me just ask a question quick.
Sure.
Because you're asking for the reduced setbacks towards Stratum Tire there, there's nothing in the plan that mentions any fencing or anything. And I know right now Stratum Tire is kind of sitting vacant. Is there any plan to put any fencing along that backside?
No, there's a, actually, we asked for three and a half feet instead of five. It's very, the building is actually very close to the five, so, and, and we're not proposing any fencing. This will sort of be the backside, just the windows. It'll be in that way. There won't be any pedestrian activity in the back, if you will. So, no.
You never know what's going to happen to Stratum Tire.
That's right.
This, this is true.
Although I thought I heard something last time that someone was planning on buying it and opening a restaurant.
No, it's for lease right now.
Yeah.
And, and I'm concerned about that setback too, just because of what, what you said. You don't know what's going to happen with that property. And if you don't get the three and a half setback, it stays at five. What would that do to your plan?
Actually, the building right now is at the five, is at the five feet. If we don't get it, it's not that we want to move the building. We're just going to be digging back in that area. There's, there's drainage along the backside of it. We're right up against the five foot, so.
So the building's going to be adhering to the five foot, but the, the foundation drains and all of that stuff will go into the five-foot setback.
Did, did you consider attempting to acquire land from the abutters so you solve the problem that way?
No.
Okay.
That, I think then that, that would have to just be something that if someone develops something that the resident here don't like, they're going to have to put up a fence afterwards.
At the five foot? Or the three and a half?
Well, on the property line or whatever.
Which is five feet right now.
Three, three and a half foot still gives you enough room to get a lawnmower back there.
Right.
As long as you don't have a big fancy ride-on thing.
Pretty big, pretty big fight. I, I just, with, with the history of what's been going on around here with setbacks and stuff, I, I.
As I said, the, the, the building is at the five feet right now.
Right.
And, and again, remember that if this property is developed, this is, this is residential. It's going to be after some consideration on this property for the residential property here. The allowable setback is five feet. We're really talking not much here.
The problem, the problem is, Charlie, if, if they move it another couple of feet that way, that moves the entrance driveway a couple of feet that way, that they're also asking for performance zoning.
But I thought they just said they, they're at the five-foot thing now.
The, the building will be at the five foot, but they.
Right, so, so what difference will that make? If we think at the three and a half feet, the building's still going to be at five feet, correct?
The building is right at the five foot.
Right.
You know, if we submit an as-built, it's, you know, that shows that it's over that five-foot mark a little bit or something, we're just, we're just saying, we would like to be able to build it right up to the five-foot line.
Well, there's nothing stopping that because they're at the five-foot setback, right? And I, I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on this thing.
Yes.
So if the building's at the five, they've already, they, they've got it right to that five feet, why would we want to make it three and a half feet setback from the property next door? Doesn't that open a can of worms or potentially?
No, I don't think so. I think, I think what Mr. Howard's trying to say is, is.
There are construction activities.
Stuff, stuff happens, right? During construction, and if they end up at four feet, nine inches, and we haven't given them five feet, then, you know, there are other steps that need to be, need to be taken. And so they're, they're trying to be proactive and say, they, they want, instead of asking for forgiveness after the fact, they want to be, they want to, they want to get the approval upfront.
So the building will be at five feet?
Yes.
That's, that's set in stone. So the five feet, the only thing you're concerned about then is construction? That you may have to do some things on that five-foot spot?
No, you'll probably have some roof overhang. You'll have, you know.
Foundation.
In terms of construction, the, the trenching will be.
During construction?
Yeah.
Well, the edge of the building's at five foot. Your footing is, is inside, inside that five foot.
It'll build right to the property line, Charlie, just for the footings and stuff. There'll be structures within the, if they don't get, well, let me ask you this. Wouldn't you normally, if this wasn't performance zoning, have to request a waiver of the setback requirement? That would be ZBA, not us, right?
Correct.
Okay. So performance zoning means that we can do what the planning, the zoning board normally would do, which is to.
In certain zones, under redevelopment considerations, yes.
Okay.
And the, and the, and the abutter, Stratum Tire has been notified of this?
Property owner has been notified of, of, of this proposed development.
On the request to go to three and a half feet.
They have been notified that this property will, is subject to an appro, site plan approval. It's up to them to do their homework to know what's going on.
That's why we have public hearings.
And we have the plans online. We have, you know, the whole nine yards.
So the public hearing's tonight on this or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, it's true. We do not know what's going to happen to the old, you know, Stratum Tire building, whether it gets a new owner and they reuse the same building, in which case, you know, they will be fairly close together. Or it gets bought and it gets redeveloped, in which case the new owner knows that they're right next door to an apartment complex and they're going to have to take that in consideration in terms of the sighting of their buildings. I mean.
We are not planning on putting the building at the three and a half foot line. We are, the building is, this back line right now is at the five, right at the five, five-foot setback line, right on it.
And that building that Stratum Tire has, how far back is that setback from their property line now?
Probably 10 foot.
That's right there.
Further away.
Uh, no. Uh, that may be pavement. I think that's pavement.
10 to 15 foot, judging by the long grass that hasn't been.
That's, so that, so that, well, we're certainly not here about lawn trimmings, but I, so right now that building is about 10 feet, you're saying, or 10 to 15 feet back? Okay.
The setback encroachment's going to be totally on the applicant's property, I think. That's the, the thing to look at. And the other, the other, for lack of a better term, waiver requests where the driveway entrance couldn't quite meet the 50 feet.
That's correct.
And what was the other?
The density. We're asking for 14 units instead of.
14 instead of 10.
10 is allowed in.
It was always my understanding that that was one of the big reasons why performance zoning was an important, um, planning tool.
Yes, and it's very clear, I think, in your, the wording of your performance zoning ordinance, that it mentions density, it mentions setbacks, it mentions other, other items specifically that are allow, would be allowable to help development in, in this zone and under redevelopment conditions. So I think we.
So it's your position that, that, that this board could, under performance zoning, could approve encroachment into the setback?
That's what we're asking for.
That's, the, the, the.
Yes, yeah.
You two.
Okay. It specifically mentioned setbacks in the performance zoning.
All right. Any question? All right, had you reached an endpoint or were you waiting for us to respond to your question about performance zoning?
I think that's on the performance zoning. I could continue with the rest of the development aspect of this project.
Sure.
All right. Thank you. It's, just so we're clear, it is in the UC zone, we're point, 0.52 acres on the corner of Fair and Water Streets. The site has access to all municipal utilities. The existing lot coverage is now 32.9% green space where 10% is required in the zone. The setbacks on all sides are five feet, and there are existing sidewalks on Fair Street, Fair Street and Water Street that, under the existing conditions. We're proposing 14 two-bedroom, approximately 924 square foot units, each one, seven on the ground floor and seven on the second story. Be seven here and seven on the second story. The, uh, the, there will be underground gas, water and electric to the site. This is Water Street. The sewer will be, a new sewer connection here to the existing sewer. The water will be a new connection from the existing water line. The gas line will come in. This little utility room here. The, uh, as I mentioned, the lot coverage will change from about 32.9 to 24%. Will be more, uh, impervious cover on the ground. But what I would like to say, that the impervious cover will be mostly, or more of the building in this case, which the runoff from the building we can, can control. It's going to be going into drip edge, enhanced drip edge, infiltrative, stone drip edge along the building and two rain gardens in the front. Overflow from those, if necessary, would get into municipal drainage. So we're, in, in the existing condition, all the pavement right now just goes into the drainage. So we're cutting the, cutting the parking lot in half, if you will, controlling the drainage off from the building through our, through our systems and even though that there is more, less green space in the developed condition, but we still meet over the 10%, which is allowed in the zone. 21 parking places are required for 14 units, one and a half times the number of units. We're asking for 26 only because of, I guess you might say, changing demographics in the, you know, a lot of people have two cars and so it would be helpful for us to provide those extra spaces. We have a screen dumpster on site. Would be in this area. Building will have building lighting, all downcast and existent ambient lighting, provide enough lighting for the site. Landscaping will be the lawman's seed, planted rain gardens in front of the buildings and street trees. We are going to maintain both sidewalks, so won't be any change to that. And we feel this project will help provide sorely needed housing in the Laconia and Lakes region. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Mr. Howard and Susie?
Um, the lighting. Is it all going to be on the building?
No, there is, uh, street lighting right now. There's a street light on this pole that shows on the, that, that would provide lighting in this area. There's a street light on this pole on the street that provides. We don't feel we need any additional lighting. And we will have security lighting around the back of the building, but then also some building-mounted lighting along, you know, downcast lighting for the stairways, for the, along the edge of the building.
I guess that was more of my question is how many are on the building?
I don't, we don't have, I don't have that number for you.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was just going to be every door got one or.
It might be. It might be, it might be like a coach light at each door, um, but, uh, there are stairways that'll have to be lit.
I was just thinking, it's just a little isolated, is all, and so they might appreciate a little more.
Yes. We're trying to minimize it, but there will be safe, enough for safe travel.
Any other questions? The other good. All right, well, sensing none, we'll open the public hearing at eight forty-four PM. Are there any abutters present to this project that would like to be heard? So, come on up. Any abutters? Any members of the public that would like to be heard on this application? All right. Sensing none, we'll close the public hearing at eight forty-five, and then we'll get the staff report.
As I mentioned earlier, they did a conceptual plan with the planning board earlier. They meet all the zoning requirements, when you take into consideration performance zoning, that, that this board can provide relief to. The proposal is for fourteen smaller apartments, so the stated goal here has been to have them be affordable, they are not subsidized, they are not low income, they are not any of those things, but they are market rate, but they're not luxury either, so, you know...
Like one bedroom?
Yeah, they're, they're mostly two bedrooms, they, they may be all two bedrooms, but they're not, you know, they're, they're not going to be marketed as luxury apartments with a luxury price tag, they're going to be standard apartments.
With a view of the lumberyard.
With a view of the lumberyard, yeah. They are managing their stormwater, uh, better than what is currently, uh, the situation, and, um, they are adding some landscaping, which is sorely needed in that corner of the, of those two streets, and, uh, staff recommends that you grant approval with the conditions that we have attached.
Dean?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Dean.
I noticed, oh, they have a completion date of 2024, that's, that's two years out, is that unusual?
It is not. Two, two years is...
Usually these applications are good for one year.
It, it depends on the size of the project. We recently became aware, uh, through our legal counsel, that, um, the standard timeframe would be one year, except for when the board specifies a different timeframe. So, in this case, we are suggesting a two-year timeframe, and, uh, I think the plan is for them to start construction this fall, so it should be, they should be at least far enough along in the project that they should be okay.
I have a question, quick. The catch basins that come out of there and hook up to Fair Street, does that run down into the river there? Are those any of the ones that outlet straight to the river?
Yes, yes, all of, all of the stormwaters, drains in the, in both streets, uh, make their way to the, to the Winnipeg River, yep.
Who is the abutter that owns Strathem Tire? Do you have a name? Do you know who it is, or...
Lionel Levante Trust.
The trust? And how did you guys notify them of, of this meeting tonight?
We sent a certified letter to every abutter for the address that's on record with the tax.
So that didn't come back, that went to somebody?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Just trying to prevent any screaming now in the next meeting, so, valid question, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay.
And none of these are ownership, right? It's all rental?
Correct.
All right. Well, what should the ward, what would the board like to do? The question is to, whether to approve this?
I'll make the motion to approve. Uh, let me see here, glasses, I guess. Motion to approve PL 2022-0057 SP, 0058 CUP, 141 Water Street.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, sensing none, all those in favor, raise a hand. Opposed? Janus, fourteen more units of rental housing. Amen and hallelujah.
Except for the loss of the cafe.
The, the article that was in the paper last week was wrong. The Water Street Cafe is not going anywhere.
Oh, awesome.
Trust me, you'll, you'll see it again.
Oh, good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Doc.
Right next door.
Thank you. Yeah, well, that's, that is good news. All right, so, um, I'm going to call a five-minute recess, and then we can come back, um, for the, the other continued matter. Mr. Trefethen, is this, should this be under full business, or is this the proper section for it to be in?
It is under continued, you were, you've taken, the board has tabled it twice, so it's under continued.
Does that require another public hearing?
It is, uh, the option of, at this point in time, it would be the option of the board or whether you wanted to open, whether you wanted to open up another public hearing or not.
Okay. Well, would the abutters be able to address the matter if we didn't have a public hearing?
That would constitute public hearing, and I don't see any reason why the board would not want to do that.
All right. In that case, five-minute recess, and then we'll come back. Will you be chairing? My, I'm best chair?
Am I?
You, you or Mike?
It's going to be easy. All right.
My last one.
Five minutes.
Oh, okay. I guess we'll wait for the butter.
Time flies and you're having fun.
Oh, yes, we want to be legal.
Has to pass the chair.
I thought it kinda, yeah, but.
Not really. Took a recess.
Uh, there's a couple that reference under separate covers, so we want to reference.
Did you already get this? See, he's planning on making.
I have, uh, great entrance.
Are you giving one of these to everybody or?
I think that was his.
We don't get along.
Point of his question.
Everyone or no one.
That's nice.
You're not reading that right. Everybody just acts like they get along.
We were told to play well in the sandlot.
Okay.
If they just know, you know, they get, they know what it is. Do you ride? The first thing I did, no, I didn't.
No.
No, but I.
But I mitigate them all.
But I'm there. I'm a part of it with her.
We are indeed happily.
Just, just reminder, the mics are live at the moment. Who is this? This is a. Maybe track that statement.
How long does PRC usually last? I know it depends on what's on the agenda, but is it?
It'll be very fast tomorrow.
Oh, well, okay. What was? I was gonna say, I didn't miss something today.
No, no, we do, we do our, our office one where we do, do a little roundtable.
Oh, okay.
Should be pretty mild for tomorrow.
Don't you guys not to let me leave?
Jean said he's bringing coffee and doughnuts.
Hi.
He's going to the car.
You got another big one.
What?
Jean said he was bringing coffee and doughnuts.
Okay. Technical.
Nowadays.
Handles up with Charlie last, so I better, uh. While filling in.
Because I ran up the stairs. I had to run outside to the parking lot.
Okay, well, we're back on the record and I'm going to officially recuse and appoint the vice chair, Stacey Susie, to chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Ron Decola, representing Pogus Properties. With me tonight is, as you can see, is a room full of consultants who will step up here and address certain issues that we have incorporated within our plan. We also have Paul Fitzgerald here, our attorney, and last but not least certainly is Scott Everett is with us also, the owner slash manager of Pogus Properties. So we're here for two reasons. First and foremost is to seek the board's approval of our amended site plan that we filed probably two meetings ago. And one, as you all know, subject to the Superior Court's ruling, which passed down to the ZBA, which has passed down to this board, which basically just mandated that we show the pilings on the site plan and get the site plan approved as an amended site plan. We've done that. That site plan's been in front of you for a couple of months now. On a parallel path, we're here to address Mr. Burnett's concerns. There were, as you know, there were six concerns that he had listed in some of his emails. And we're here to address each and every one of those concerns tonight. At the last meeting, the board requested or actually mandated that we submit a written response to you by, within two weeks of this meeting. And the last meeting was June twenty eighth, excuse, June seventh, so we had until June twenty eighth, which you did. We submitted a memorandum to this board, which I'm sure you have as a matter of record in front of you now. At that time, we could only address a couple of the issues because some of the reports and the corroborating data were still in process and they were not in final form. So I'm here to tell you tonight that they are and we have the consultants here too that will go over that for you folks and answer any question you may have. What I'd like to do, if it's okay with the board, we've got all the issues listed as Mr. Burnett had listed them, okay? But I just want to jump to two issues that I can address personally and then we'll go down to the other issues and I'll bring up the consults, introduce the consultants as we go, if that's okay with the board. Sure. Landscape mitigation is the first one on your memorandum. I'm gonna pull up a plan, I'll put the plan on the screen here for you. So the area, the area in question is, you see, yellow. It's a very, very tight area between our property and Mr. Burnett's. It's just not feasible to put grass that has to be mowed there. It's just a very tight area. It's somewhat of a safety issue and it's just, again, not feasible. So what we're proposing, as stated in the memo here, is we have, we're gonna put soils there, all right? And there a moraffe woven factor will be placed over the soil. It will then be covered with mulch and plantings. So as I said, the area in question is tricky to plant. So this is a good, we feel is a good solution and obviously we'll maintain the mulch and the, and the plantings. But that's more or less a one or two times a year type of thing versus, you know, maybe two or three weeks with mowing. And again, to get a mower in there is just not good. What I'd like to jump to next is the dust mitigation section. So we understand Mr. Burnett's concerns. We don't acknowledge any, any blame in this, in this area. There is dust there. But we do understand his concerns. So we will agree, if Mr. Burnett will solicit the bids of three such companies that do power washing of the house, we will pay, we will reimburse him for his costs and we'll just pay the power washes directly. The one, the one caveat to that is that we will also need indemnification from Mr. Burnett for any damage that these people may cause to his house. He's gonna contract with them directly. We'll just pay for it. Okay, folks? So what I'd like to do too here is combine this driveway repair. Driveway repair and the foundation issues are pretty much linked to the same issue and that's seismic vibrations and all that. So what I'd like to do now is bring up two people from BPS, Keith McBey and Tim Burke. And then I'd also like to bring up Andrew Micho from SW Coal. He did the seismic study. They can explain things to you. There are pitches here too and I just want to bring them up now and then I'll come back up. We'll address the other issues. Thank you.
Mr. Driveway. Thanks, Ron. Good evening. I'm Keith McBey. I'm president of Bonnet Page and Stone. We're construction managers on Mr. Everett's project. And it's, we've been tasked with executing the project per, per plans and specifications and approvals. And then further tasked by Mr. Everett to be good neighbors there. So what that means is that we've, we've been in meetings with the butters. We're watching traffic and parking and dust. Noise is always an issue on construction sites and, and also keeping an eye on safety around the project. So with me I have Tim Burke and, and as Ron said, Andrew Micho. Tim's our project superintendent onsite. So he is, he's the boots on the ground keeping an eye on all that, all that work. And then Andrew is specifically tasked with soils as well as, as vibration technology and detection there. With that, Tim's, Tim's familiar with the timeline. Both gentlemen can speak to you about the placement of the seismic sensitive devices and, and the results of that. Particularly Andrew has done a lot of, you'll see in the charts, to, to track that and be sure that we're within limits and, and that things are done properly and, and monitored along the way. So with that, I'll introduce Tim.
Hi, how you do, folks? I just want to say that we did do due diligence insofar as having Andrew's company do the monitoring with seismic machinery. And as well as Mr. Burnett was gracious enough to let us in his basement to check that out before any of the heavy duty work was done. And we do have every confidence that we haven't done any damage to his foundation. In fact, surprises, it's in just a good shape, its foundation, considering it's an old stone foundation, one hundred fifty years old. But it's a, it's pretty, pretty rugged foundation there that he has and it's done a lot of maintenance on it over the years as well. As far as the site, the paved area, again, you know, a lot of cracking there to get started with. But again, I don't think we have done any damage to it. We never drove over the paved area, his driveway or anything. Andrew here can, can explain the monitoring system and how the sound waves, shock waves would have, might influence anything like that and all this data that he has with him. But again, we feel have every confidence that we done, didn't do any damage to his foundation and/or his paved area. I'll bring Andrew in to explain any situations.
Thanks, everyone. So we were hired by, by the owner to do pre and post-construction photos and documentation of the condition of the foundation and around the exterior of the structure. You'll see in those packets a bunch of comparisons of twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. In addition, we set up two seismographs, one on the property line at, on the Elm Street property and one at the church on, that's on Park Street as well. So one of the challenges that we had is that the seismograph that was set up on the property line was very, very close to the pile driving activities within two to five feet, I'd say on average, when we were on the intersection of the property line and the, and Park Street. So that seismograph picked up a lot of vibrations. And all the data is in those packets. Oh, yeah.
Is that this, is that what you're referencing by data?
I'm getting to that one. It's in the, the bigger binder. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So those. So the charts that are in there are the live data that came from the seismograph. We monitored from July fifteenth through July twentieth of twenty-one. That was while the pile driving activities were going on. And the data that you see is the, all the individual readings, the polka dots that you see on some of those charts. What it starts on about page six of the, of the document there.
The big document?
Yeah. Yeah. So. You'll see, if you continue to flip, it's, I'm on page twelve. Those readings were at, on seven sixteen. We had some polka dots there. Those are the individual readings. And they, they're graphed on a, you see the, the stepped line on the chart, the upper chart. There's three individual charts. Those, those are above vibration limits. But again, like I said, those were taken within a couple of feet of the pile driving activity. So what we did is we looked at that data and extrapolated it out using a couple of different models by New Hampshire DOT and American Society of Civil Engineers that display that as you get further away from the vibration, the source of vibration, the vibrations reduce. So there's a supplemental chart that, that I provided. One of the sheets is based on New Hampshire DOT data. That's this one. I don't know if everybody can see it. What I did is I plotted the worst case scenario, the highest vibration reading we had at the property line and extrapolated it out approximately fifteen feet and out to thirty feet, which is where we estimated the, the butters' foundation to be from the property, where the seismograph was set up. And what it, what it showed us is that estimated that it falls below, as the, you increase distance away from the source of vibration, it takes those vibrations that were above level, it decreases them below damaging levels. That damaging level is typically what's called two point oh peak particle velocity and that's the, the size of the wave, the size of the vibration. Typical drywall and plasters will crack over two point oh peak particle velocity. Foundations and concrete and more rigid structures tend to see distress above four point oh peak particle velocity. So what I tried to display is that as we increase distance away from the source of the vibration, the peak particle velocity is estimated to decrease below damaging levels. So that, that's the sheet, and that, that's one model. I believe it's the first page that you all have in the supplemental attachment. And then I took a more conservative model, that was developed by the American Society of Civil Engineers, their Geotechnical Engineering Division. It's a more conservative model and you'll see if we extrapolate those out, they are higher than the New Hampshire DOT model. However, they still fall below the acceptable vibration limits if you increase your distance from the source of vibration. As far as the pre and post-construction photos, we didn't see anything outstanding that, that was in much different condition from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty. Generally, overall, we saw some, prior to construction, we saw some cracking and spalling mortar in the foundation, some irregular roof lines, some chipping paint and items like that. And then we saw the very similar condition in two thousand twenty-two. Those visits, one was in May of two thousand twenty-one and our follow-up visit was in, on July first of two thousand twenty-two.
Again, one of the better old foundations, old rock granite piled foundations, we've seen in a long time. Once in a while, we do get a project like this. We're working alongside or aiding to buildings like this, but it's a pretty rugged foundation. It was in, I have every confidence again that we didn't do any damage to Mr. Burnett's foundation at all. The paving, again, I do your analysis also. I don't think we've done any settlement or anything like that. I mean, we didn't see any open, open cracking. Same with foundations. You know, we see things settle or something like that. We expect to see some large cracks from the larger at the bottom. Then at the top tells us ground has been settled. No evidence of that and as well with the seismic grass readings that Andrew had placed there. Again, two of those machines were here near the house and near the, the other church there as well. Very concerned about the steeple, church steeple there too.
Yeah. We didn't have any readings above limits at the church. And I could have, should have put it on this report, but if you extrapolate out from this ASCE model, approximately a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty feet away from the property line where the source of vibration was, the types of vibrations that we got at the church fall right in line on, on this vibration to distance model that the Society of Civil Engineers has developed.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question at this point? It's relevant to all this data that I'm trying to make sense of.
Did you want to get to the?
Whatever the board wants to do.
You're okay with questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, you know, it makes sense to me, you know, being a layperson, the further away you get from the source of vibration, the less peak particle velocity that you're going to experience. And I see from this, you know, fifteen feet away and then thirty feet away, it decreases. Makes sense. Yeah. So how, what kind of distance were we dealing with, with this project? Where the pilings and the vibration, the source of the vibration and the butters' foundation or other property.
That's, that's sort of why we, we chose the fifteen and the thirty feet. We estimated about thirty feet from where the source of vibration was at the closest point to the foundation.
So around thirty feet?
Around thirty feet and we said we use fifteen for the driveway.
Okay.
So that's why we wanted, we selected those two distances.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
It's a lot of data to digest, but.
No, yeah. And this is, this is day to day, it looks like?
Yeah, the, the, the top portion, the three individual charts, those are the vibrations taken in three different directions, horizontally, transverse and longitudinal.
So can you help me just digest this? I mean, what, what, at what point were the greatest vibrations?
On seven sixteen.
Seven sixteen.
Yeah. And I believe some moving in, you can kind of, so the top is the individual readings, the bottom is the timeline of the vibrations. So you'll see a big drop off on, that's when there was no work activity. It was after work hours.
Quitting time.
And then you can kind of see, we left it installed twenty-four seven or twenty-four five or however many days we were there. It was there for twenty-four hours a day on.
So your seven sixteen was some of the?
Yeah.
Just because you had some activity earlier and later?
We were very close. That was the start. They started in the corner. Tim, Tim could speak better to that. They started in the corner of.
The corner of Park Street.
Yeah, and we were right in that corner with our monitoring device.
At that.
This is very standard for us to call in a, a company like SW Coal to do this kind of monitoring for us, whether, whether we're blasting here or something or heavy excavation or in this case drive at the sheet piles.
So in interpreting this data, seven sixteen, let's say, was the high point of the vibrations. Does that still fall below the, you know, dangerous?
Well, those, that data shows you it doesn't, but you also need to take into the, the proximity of the seismograph to the, the driving activities where we're feet away. That's why we said, well, we need to extrapolate this out and take a look at what would you be fifteen feet away? What would you be thirty feet away?
I mean, it wouldn't be fair to have the thing a hundred feet away in the wrong direction.
Right, right.
Close to where the.
Yeah. Right.
Meat and potatoes was.
Yeah.
So thirty feet away. Is that the driveway or the foundation?
That's the corner of the foundation, sort of off the porch, the front porch, covered deck area.
And that fell below one on this scale?
Yeah, so it's point about, one, two, three, point, point five peak particle velocity.
Little higher, fifteen feet.
Yeah.
And your visual inspection didn't show any noticeable cracking or?
No, no.
We, again, extensively looked through it before any of the work was started, but over a year ago now. And then just very recently again, two more recent inspections.
Thank you.
What's that? Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
I just want to add one thing regarding the seismic. There were challenges there because the, Mr. Burnett's driveway is within, is it six or eight feet? Of the property line. So we did not want to put the meters through here. We didn't want to damage his driveway. So we had, that's why we were so close to the actual pile drive. We were restricted by the existing pavement. Also, if you could turn to page four of your pamphlets that you have, there were before and after pitches of the driveway?
The large one or the small?
Oh, the book.
Small.
The book. So what we did there is that picture is circus, 2018, that was taken from Google Earth, showing his driveway back then, 2018. That's obviously well before we were there. And then the other picture is today, and the sidewalk is delineated there in color just to show you the differentiation between the sidewalk and the driveway itself. So you can see, there's really no discernible difference, in our opinion, 2018 and today. I just wanted to point that out to you folks. If it's okay, Madam Chair, I'm going to proceed with the next section, if it's okay with you. Okay. Fencing. Mike Locken here is the project manager with Pogus Properties, and he's going to address the fencing issue. Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
All right, so mine should be pretty brief, I would think. One of the things on his mitigation items, Mr. Burnett's, was fencing. And so on our site-approved plan, we had, in our scope, is pick-up fencing. And so we had fencing specked out along the ready wall. And if you could go to the subsequent page, right in the, right behind that, this page here that comes out, you will see that there's a shaded area, and this shaded area is the Ready Rock retaining wall that is kind of towards CJ Avery's side of it, our secondary parking. And so that fencing is a four-foot plastic fencing that is strictly for safety. It's not for privacy. It was to go on top of that, so that way, if someone was to go down or whatever, they would have that extra barrier, would have you for that. So that one is already in our scope, and I think, I don't know if he was referring to that, but we already have that covered for that part of it. The second part is fencing around the dumpsters. We have screening around that to cover the dumpsters in two locations, so you will not be able to see it. There'll be a gate that goes in, so that way it'll be enclosed. And I think he was, I think he may have knew that, but it would be up to him. The third one is a fencing that he was talking about on the backside of the parking garage, on the Park Street side. And what we did was, it was going to be a paved little area, and we removed that paved area, so that way we wouldn't have any access to get to the parking garage from the outside. We are going to put a panic bar on the inside and be able to just use it as an egress only. So no one will be able to access that parking garage from that corner of Park Street and his property. So by doing that, we just removed the pavement altogether, and we just have a door that you cannot access from the outside. So there's no need for a fence there.
Was that the picture that had the bar across that was going to go up and down? Or am I on the wrong side? I'm thinking way back when we first got a conceptual view.
Of, I don't believe there was any, there was never a fence there. So are you talking about the retaining wall part, or...
I think I thought cars were going to be able to come into Park Street off the garage?
There is an opening at the parking garage.
Oh, there is an opening, but that's a gate, that's for parking to go into the actual parking garage.
Oh, so you're talking a little further?
Yeah, so that would be on the backside of the parking garage. Mr. Burnett's house is here. This, the backside of the parking garage, there's a door right here, like an egress door.
Got you.
Yeah, and so before it was going to be, like, accessible, and you'd have to, you know, have a little pavement walkway type of thing, and you would have, and I believe he wanted some kind of fence around that. What we did was, we decided to just remove the pavement, I mean, the walkway altogether. And by doing that, we just have a door, and that door is going to be for anybody inside, which is really only going to be used in an emergency situation. No one's ever going to want to walk out to that Park Street corner, per se. And so we'll have a panic bar on it in case something was to happen inside, and they can exit out of that.
The fire exit.
Yeah, like exit, you know, so.
Emergency.
Emergency only.
And is that retaining wall finished, or are they still working on it?
It's all done?
That is finished.
Yeah, on the other side, you mean?
Because I was just looking at, when I'm driving on Union Ave, it just seems like it's so low.
Oh, you're talking on the Park Street side?
Yeah.
No, she's talking where Avery's was.
Avery's has that retaining wall, and that's, if you can...
Yeah, so at the bottom of this plan here, if you guys can see this, this is on that subsequent page Mike was talking about. So you'll notice the detail. That's the retaining wall per Peter Howard's original plan. That was designed by Ready Rock to be engineered properly to withstand what it's holding there. And you'll notice at the top of that detail, there's a fence. This is where Mr. Burnett had asked for an eight-foot privacy fence, privacy fence at the eastern border of his property.
Which goes up about four feet.
So you'll notice on the plan, it does say a four-foot fence. So what we were looking for there was fall protection. So we've been, in our talks with Peter, excuse me, Peter Howard, he's recommending a four-foot chain-link aluminum-coated fence for fall protection only. So the purpose of that fence was never to provide privacy. I'm not sure eight feet would, like you said, how low that wall is to get privacy to Peter's house. I don't know what we'd be talking about, you know, that'd be a large fence.
Because it sits way high, his house, the elevation.
Right, yeah. That's why I thought the wall wasn't finished quite yet.
Yeah, the wall is, yep, that's where it's proposed at, so.
Yeah, the wall's finished, but we're going to have railing on top of that, a fence.
Got you, okay.
Just in case there were, if I can blow this up, the questions about the, if you look back at the landscaping plan, it sounds like maybe there's a little confusion on the exit there. So right outside the landscaping plan, this is the back of the parking garage on Park Street. You'll see there's a faint door. This was a paved access out to Park Street. There was concerns about putting pavement that close to the property line, so we figured the compromise would be to remove it, remove all exterior hardware, so that way it's just in case of emergency. And there's so many exits between that point and the rest of the building, and we feel it'd be very sparsely used, so.
Can you point out where that door will be?
Yeah.
Is it in the corner? It's at the end?
Yeah, so right at the end of this.
Yeah, right at the end there.
Yep.
Right where the yellow stops.
Right.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yep. Perfect.
And that's just going to be a flush door, you know, you won't...
Any questions?
About the fence?
Yes.
I do have a question on the fence. So on the elevation, it shows on the left side, top of the walls, 526, and then in the center, it's top of the walls, 520. So that's a six-foot elevation shift from there to there. So is the four-foot fence only going to be in the lower section, the center section? Or are you going to bring a four-foot fence over, drop it down that angle, and come across?
I think, let's see, that's sort of six feet. I believe it's going to be all the way around that whole fence. Because it's about, I see what he's saying, but...
So will it be...
You've got to build a panel.
I think it steps, right? Or just goes right here? I think it was just on the flat.
Yeah, so as you can see, it's inconclusive. I mean, we could provide it straight across. If there was fall protection, we could definitely work with the city and Joe to see what he'd want there. We have a plan, we have a budget carried for that, for that whole detail. If we had to extend the fence to prevent any issues there, that's something we can certainly do. Obviously, I agree with you, there's some inconclusiveness there, but...
Because if you only carry it at the 520 elevation, you've still got that, another six foot or above that, that is still a fall zone with nothing. Okay.
Yep, so we could, yeah, even if it does reach that top zone, and if we have to move the fence off the wall a little bit to kind of work with the curve of the landscape, then pick it up back down below. So there's definitely options, but the plan is to protect the entire retaining wall.
So you will do that, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that.
So Rich, you're talking about a change in elevation along the wall then?
That type of block comes in big squares, if you would envision, and you set them, and as you follow the topography, it just steps down. So the top, in one section, is at 526, and the main wall is at 520, so there's a six-foot elevation change.
Yeah, so those lengths...
On the block itself. On the block itself?
Yeah.
And that's, Stacy, that's why it looks to you like it's not all done.
Perfect. Any other questions regarding fence? Yeah, it'll be a little blocky.
Just think of Minecraft.
There you go.
Know what Minecraft is, guy?
I've seen a fence company build a panel that's angled and put it down, because I've been in that situation where we've had to do that.
We probably could do something like that, yeah. I mean, it's proposed for a chain-link poly-type of thing. We'll kind of seek out what they can do. They'll take a look at it. A fence company will come and give us the best solution for that. I mean, obviously, we want it to be safe. I mean, we've, you know, we've done a great job to this point, to that, so we're going to keep going with whatever we have to do on that, so.
Okay.
What else? Anything else?
Guys, good?
Good?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I apologize, too, if anyone doesn't, wondering who this guy is. I'm Barrett Salta with Bonnet Page and Stone. I'm the project manager for the 51 Elm Street project, so sorry about that.
Thank you, Barrett. Mike, the last item we'd like to address is the lighting issue. Mr. Burnett had some concerns with spillage over from the site onto his property. As we've said in our presentation, all the outside lighting will be downcast in nature and is obviously in compliance with the City of Laconia design requirements. I'd like to bring up Chad Montrose right now from RFS Engineering. There's a revised study that you have in front of you, you should have in front of you, a lighting study, and I want him to... Okay, so I'm sorry. Okay, so Barrett, and Chad will come up right now and discuss the lighting study and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is, again, Chad Montrose from RFS Engineering. We were the structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing and fire protection engineers on the project. So we'll just go over the lighting. Really, the discussion here is really focused on the parking garage at this point, and Barrett is bringing up the plan. So we made, so over the course of the last year, we've made a couple of tweaks to the lighting design for the parking garage. Right now, the upper level of the parking garage, which is accessed off of Park Street, is going to be illuminated by six fixtures on the interior of the building. And those fixtures are hung directly from the roof structure, at the roof structure level, and they are downlights. Each fixture has its own occupancy sensor or motion detector. So as a vehicle is driving into the building, each fixture will come on as it's within its range of motion. We've performed a new photometric study of the site and have adjusted the locations of those. We moved those fixtures in two feet from the edge of the building, from the edge of the garage, and have resulted in no light spillage onto the adjacent property. Additionally, we removed one light fixture off of the building, which was located at the egress door that we've been talking about. So now that there's no exterior hardware on the door, there's really no need for someone to come access that door and use keys to get into it, or a fob, or any other kind of opening device. So again, since it's egress only, we've eliminated that light fixture off that face of the building. So at that point, all the light, any light spillage has been eliminated. I would like to point out that on Park Street, directly across from the garage, there is a street-mounted light fixture that we have not modeled, but that certainly probably protects light all up and down Park Street at this point, and probably onto that property. So any existing light pollution that may spill on there is from that fixture, not anything that's associated with the garage.
Questions on lighting? Everybody good? It's 9:40. We're wrapping right along.
That concludes our presentation, Madam Chairwoman. If nobody has any questions for me, I could offer Scott Everett to come up and say a few words or answer a few questions.
Oh, I think Charlie might have a question for you.
It's actually more of a comment, but I'm very impressed with everything. I mean, this is quite a job here, this presentation tonight. I think it answers a lot of questions. But I sure do wish you had a better picture of the driveway. Only because I think you were very good about pre-construction, you know, getting all this stuff, looking at all this stuff. I don't know if the abutter would have objected to somebody going up there and standing and looking face down with a video camera or something to take pictures of all this, because these pictures don't do it any justice at all. You know, you're looking at a Google thing. They're from the street, looking up. They're not looking down directly on it. That's just a comment.
Yeah, we do, yeah. Obviously, it's hard to get pictures in the past. I mean, Google Earth is a good source. But we do have other pictures that we took, present-day pictures, that, you know, we could provide to the board.
Okay, I'll just, it's just a comment, because you've done, like I said, everything else here is so...
Yeah, we don't want to overwhelm you, and there was a lot of stuff here.
I'm not overwhelmed. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi.
People speak for me here, so I'm Scott Everett, my project on a few in town. And I just wanted to finally come and just address it. First and foremost, I appreciate all the efforts you guys do. I've sat here for now four hours almost. It's amazing. You do it every night, so I appreciate the efforts, truly. Secondly, you know, we had our site plan. That's the goal of us, to just try to get that thing approved tonight. All these six issues came in. I think you'll see, yeah, we tried to go into extensive, you know, knowledge. We've got 11 experts here in every single thing, from a seismic graph, which I didn't even know what it was, to the foundation, to we've agreed to wash the house, we've agreed to, you know, even mitigate, you know, and put the fence, get rid of doors, you know, it's a great point about the fence in the back, and which we'll take. The thing that didn't come out about any of the fences is, we're also trying to be very considerate of Mr. Brett's property, because, for example, if we put a fence on the backside where we spoke of, we're going to have to cut all those cherry trees, and we can. We can cut them right up the thing. They go into our property, and we can cut them, and we can put the fence, which he originally asked for. I'm trying not to do that. I think they're great trees. They provide a very natural, it's the same in the back. We're trying to be conscientious of that fence line. If we put an eight-foot line there, we're going to cut, there's a beautiful, natural barrier there where you can't even see the garage. And so sometimes we have to be careful what we wish for, because I don't want to cut his trees, and I don't want to cut them. And we moved our line back, even the lawnmower. If we have to get a lawnmower in there, it's going to, you know, probably damage his trees. So, you know, hopefully, at the end of the meeting, you see that we, I, the whole team, you know, even from inception to the, you know, to the seismic graph at the onset, to just make sure we measured. We didn't have a choice to measure in the middle of his driveway, because we couldn't pound things in there. We couldn't pound them next to his house. So it's my hope that you see the effort that I and we, I know there's a lot of talk about abutters trying to be friendly. We rerouted all of our lighting system. We rerouted our doors. We, I don't know, I don't know what else we can do. I don't know. We've incurred costs, tons of it. We've incurred tons of costs tonight, tons of reports, tons of everything. Like, I, I don't know, we've incurred costs, tons of it, we've incurred tons of costs tonight, tons of reports, tons of everything, and, and the approval, and it was already approved. So, but, that's my point, is we'll do whatever, but, but at some point, we gotta, we're hoping just to have an end here, and that's our, that's our goal tonight.
Oh, me too.
Yeah, so, any, did anyone have any other questions for me? I'm happy to answer anything. I appreciate, really, I appreciate all the time and effort that you all just buy.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing, too.
Yeah, it's fun, it's been great, it's, it's a great project, and, you know, I understand, you know, Peter's position as well, he has a house that, that abuts it, but, but literally, we're trying to be as conscientious as we can.
Thank you.
All right, have a nice night.
Any discussion, any comments?
We're gonna have a public hearing still?
We are doing a public hearing, okay, I'm gonna open that up at 9:44. So, keep in mind, I got a 3:00 AM. Please state your name and address.
I can remember it, it's Peter Burnett, and I live at 15 Park Street in Lakeport. I can't respond to any of the materials, I don't know when they were filed with the planning department, but I, but when I met with Tim and the representative from SW Coal, I asked for a copy before the meeting, and they told me they'd look into it, but I didn't get it, so I can't really respond to any of that. I, I'll say two things. One is, there's no way that a seismologist, soil scientist can definitively say what the connection is between the vibrations that were emanating from the pile-driving equipment along the property line and any possible damage to the foundations. I will say that I am not aware of any major structural problems with my foundations. I found a few cracks, I, I can fix them myself. When I asked for mitigation back in the day, I hadn't had access really to go around and inspect myself. So I'll say that the foundation repairs, I can take care of myself. Let's talk about the driveway for a second. They laid the seismograph at the edge of my driveway, under the cherry trees. All their measurements that they presented to you tonight apparently were at 10 feet and beyond. But the, the major brunt of the seismic vibrations was taken by my driveway. Now, I don't know what photographs you have, but if you look carefully at the current photographs, you will see that many of the major cracks have a stripe along them. That stripe is from when, in 2020, I had all the existing cracks filled with hot tar and the entire driveway and the front sidewalk sealed. There were no cracks at the end of the 2020 construction season, and there are now a mosaic of cracks. And many of these cracks are located in places that I had filled. Now, again, I don't have any scientific evidence that proves it was caused by the seismic vibrations. They don't have any seismic evidence that proves that it, they didn't. It's, it's a matter of common sense, quite frankly, what else could have caused it? Remember, the seismograph was recording within a couple of feet of the actual steel piles being driven in, and right on the edge of my driveway. So I'll let you be the judge. I had really hoped that the board would come out and do a site visit, so you could walk around. A lot of these things are quite obvious. But the driveway was definitely damaged, and I'm not a soil scientist or anything, but, you know, I read a lot, and I understand how waves propagate through soils, and the kinda soil that we have up there is called a sandy loam, it's a glacial till. My house is located on a small ridge that was once part of a large natural dam, and the original outlet of Lake Winnipesaukee, when the glacier melted, was through Mary Meeting River in Alton Bay, until the dam burst. Some of you are familiar with Valley Street in Lakeport. You maybe noticed that the name is apropos, because it's actually a narrow valley in Bedrock. That was the discharge channel for the original Lake Winnipesaukee for tens of thousands of years. Along the way, mostly sandy soil with cobbles. I mean, that's what they excavated, it was all open, and the soils under my house and under my driveway are exactly the same. And the reason I bring that up is because there's not just cracks, there's subsidence. There were bird baths in my driveway that weren't there before. Now, I don't think I have a burden to prove any of that stuff to you, because this is my home. It has been in my family since 1980. I lived there, I was one of the first people to go into that house and, and wondered at the stone foundations and the, and the beautiful Victorian accents to it. I love the place. I've lived there with my parents, they're both deceased. I live there now with tenants. I was repeatedly asked if I wanted to sell to Mr. Everett. They were very polite discussions, it always ended with no numbers being discussed, but I said no. And part of the reason I said no is because I feel like a steward of this property, cause you see, it's a trust. And I am the trustee, but I'm not the sole beneficiary. My son is the sole beneficiary, the residuary beneficiary, as it were. You know, I have an obligation to him, he's the last in my line, the Brunettes, from Sanford, Maine, French-Canadian all the way. This is part of my history, part of my family's history, this is my home. Now, look at the staff report for tonight. You are being asked by the staff, I believe, to approve retroactively the installation of these structures within the setback as part of performance zoning. The previous application, you may have noticed that the applicant made a specific performance zoning presentation, no such thing happened here. We rely heavily, as a member of the board, I know, I've been on the board for many years, both this time and last time. We rely heavily upon the staff to make determinations and to make recommendations, and we often, almost always, agree with the recommendations they're making. And in this case, the staff is not recommending any mitigation, despite the fact that it was staff error that led to this predicament. So, I don't think you can do what they're asking you to do without mitigating it somewhere, somehow. The whole purpose of mitigation is to minimize the effect on the abutter of the encroachment in the setback. The whole purpose of the setback is to protect my home from the development. These people sitting behind me, they know I've been a supporter of this development from the start, and here they come in, nickeling, diming me on this multimillion-dollar project. We're not gonna pave his driveway, we're not gonna build it, eight-foot privacy, privacy fence. And, oh, and by the way, I think the vice chair was correct in her observation, cause I've pointed this out to Tim. And that is, they need to add another course of retaining wall there, because they can't restore the grade otherwise. They, they removed a riprap retaining wall that was roughly in exactly the same location as the nice-looking wall that the architect, who I think was Peter Stewart, actually, not Peter Howard, thought would look more attractive. But the problem is, I think Mr. Sinclair brought this up, it's a bowl, okay? The, the, there is a spot where the ground meets the retaining walls, or actually with a slight slope. But then up on the wings, there's quite a change in elevation on either side. If what they're saying is, they wanna build a fence to prevent people from falling off their retaining wall, then they have to go from property, the property line to property lot. And they can't do that with a four-foot fence. It wouldn't work. They at least need to be taller in the middle in order to make up for the difference in the elevation. I'm asking for a privacy fence along that line. I never asked for a privacy fence along the line on the Elm Street side, as it were, on my southern boundary. And the reason that I put in their request that they build some sort of a fence around the proposed sidewalk from the emergency exit door at the front is because, right now, if they put a breaker bar door on that, if they put a breaker board, bar, door there and somebody has to get out in an accident in a, or, or fire, they're gonna open it into my trees. So I understand that the trees are gonna have to be trimmed there for them to even put like a, you know, a gravel path to the sidewalk, something. I'm fully, I understand that, it's a public safety issue, I don't have an objection to that. I just thought a fence might be a really good way of keeping my cherry trees from taking over that whole area. And it won't be my responsibility to determine, it'll be theirs. And I can assure you, after this building is built, there's probably not gonna be too much attention to details like this. I'm asking you for reasonable mitigations, I think it's reasonable for you to include them as conditions of approval. I think that what you're being asked by the, the planning director to do tonight is improper. It's nothing more than an approval of an as-built plan, and that defeats the whole purpose of having this process for giving abutters to come up. This is the first time I've ever stood before this board, is it an abutter? And I have sat over there and seen abutters get mitigating, mitigating conditions at the recommendation of staff. There's more at work here than just a mere planning board decision, we all know that. You know, these are people that are more concerned with liability than anything else. I don't care about that. I've said it before, mitigation beats litigation, any day. But I will do everything I can to protect this asset, the only asset my family has left for my son. And I will do everything I can in my power to make sure that its value is not diminished by a project that I have staunchly supported from the very start. If for no reason other than a sense of irony, you should probably agree with me on that. Do the right thing. That's what you have the power to do under RSA 673 and 74. That's what you have the power to do. I don't think you have the power to do what the staff is recommending. Thank you.
So, okay, before you sit down, I have a question for you, if you have a question.
Sure.
I just wanna be clear about it. So, you're still talking about the driveway, the fence?
Yeah.
Just those two?
That's all.
Everything else you agree with?
Well, the power wash, they've already agreed to, in a snide way, but I mean, they agreed to it.
What you heard tonight?
Right.
Is the driveway and the fence?
Yeah. You know.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the public who would like to speak?
I'm a public person.
Yes, you are.
Yeah, I don't know even where to start, but there was just a few things that I just had to clear up there. Number one, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't, you know, try to get up here and use a lot of fancy words and everything else. But what I do know is there were six objectable items that came to the, the table tonight, every single one we tried to get. The back, we, we already discussed, we're gonna fill that, we're gonna put a fence in there to, to make it safe and equitable. On the, on the, I guess it's the south side, the garage side, the door doesn't even come close to his property, it's probably eight feet.
Eight feet, at least.
Eight feet, and it's, and it's a three-foot door, so it doesn't come close to the property, doesn't come close to the cherry trees. And again, if we put one privacy fence up, we're gonna have to put that one, and we're gonna kill every one of those trees. So that's what we were trying to mitigate on that side, and, and we felt it gave the best privacy. And we can go back, we have literally 2,000 photos that I have like this, of the driveway, I can give you 800 more, and I can show you exactly every single crack to a T, because we anticipated this was gonna happen. I can show you before and after, and we're happy to do that, too. There was no damage to the driveway. And, and there was a price given, in fact, he offered, well, the beginning, he tried to get me for $10,000, saying, pay me $10,000 and I'll make this whole thing go away. So, so that, that was, we have that in text. We also have the price of the property offered at $550,000 last year, that said, pay me that money and this will all go away, you can afford it, and that's what I keep continuing to hear. You can afford it, you can afford it, you have tons of money, you bought C.J. Avery's from Chip for this and that. And, and quite honestly, I don't appreciate the process. I don't appreciate someone trying to strong-arm me into paying for things. I'm happy to pay for the city, I'm happy to make this an unbelievable development, but I'm not happy, and I'm not gonna let someone extort me and try to make me give them a new driveway when there was no damage done to it, because he thinks there is. I have the photos, I have a seismic, I can tell you exactly to a science how much vibration there was, and, and I'm not gonna listen to someone bully me because he thinks he's one of, you know, on the board and, and he can strong-arm you. So, my only hope is that, you know, again, we, we listened to the facts that have been presented by, by 12 unbelievable people, and, but that we've already had a ruling on. So I just kinda wanted to get that in, cause some of those statements just, just aren't true, it's just not true. And, and he did offer me, you know, to buy me out, and then a bunch of other things. So, again, I just had to get that little bit in, cause I think it was important intel for the decision. And once again, it's our hope we can just get the site plan approved and move on.
You don't have those photos with you, do you?
Oh, God, do we have those? All of them, no, we don't, cause literally, our packet this morning, when, when we met, was like this, and like, we can't crush him.
We just didn't wanna give you a thing. Look, it's 10 o'clock now.
Scott, you saw the photos we did get of the driveway, right?
Yeah.
You understand where I was coming from on that?
Yeah, sure, but if you go, you on into look, there's other photos of like around the drainage drop, and there's other footage, you can see the side, and there's massive cracks there. And that whole street is, is just getting worse, it's just old, so I don't, I don't quite know how to, you know, I mean, the, the red there that you see is the sidewalk. Yeah, that's the sidewalk, and you can see the, you can clearly see that, there was those there in 18.
See, I did do a sidewalk up there, you know, Peter didn't mention that, that I did go up the walkway, and he did show me exactly what he was talking about, where the, had been seal-coated. And that's not to say that it's not natural setting in the last two years or not, I don't know.
If you look at the whole street, you can see the whole street's gone, if you go down the backside.
Yeah, but he was only talking about his driveway, not the street, so.
Yeah, selective choice, I get it.
But, no, that's what he's talking about, so I, I understand that, and I, I understand where you're coming from, but, but I did see, you know, that.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I agree with you. I don't, I don't refute the fact that there's tons of cracks, there was tons of cracks there in 18, there was tons of cracks there in 21 when we started, and there's maybe more now. I, I don't.
I understand.
Yeah, so, anyways, any other questions? All right, again, thanks, appreciate you.
Thank you.
First of all, it was 500,000, not 550, and the only reason I threw the number at him is, every time they had offered to buy me, I was waiting for them to make the offer, cause if you're multi, if you're dealing with a multimillionaire, of course, you let them throw the number out. Well, they didn't, and so I threw 500 at them to make them go away, it wasn't 550. The other thing he got wrong was, the day after the ZBA denied my motion for rehearing, I had a conversation on the phone with Mike Locken. And I said, look, I could go to, I could go to Superior Court and I could get an injunction right now and shut this project down, I don't wanna do that. I'm concerned about the effect that this project is gonna have, you know, the driving of the steel, it's when I first found out about it. And I had been talking with the trustees of the church, and I knew that they had a 1,000-pound bell on the fourth level of a five-level steeple that was causing so much stress that, that their steeple was leaning in. And I also knew they needed thousands of dollars worth of paint, and they have a very small congregation. So you know what I did? I said to Mr. Locken, he's here, you can ask him. If the, if you could convince Scott to make a donation of at least $20,000 to the church, I could be persuaded not to go and take this appeal. And they said, well, draw something up, we'll send it to the, well, we, we'll send it to the lawyers, and then we'll have them look it over. And that was day one, they started driving the steel, by the time I was waiting for them to get back to me, most of the steel was already in. It took them three days to get all the way around the corner. And of course, at that point, I realized, they never intended to negotiate anything with me at that point. And, and so I think it's, you know, it's, it's a bit disingenuous for them to get up here. Mr. DeCola said that I've been trying to shake them down. Oh, for God's sake, people, seriously. Seriously.
Shake him down. Roomful of people for a few thousand bucks.
I'm Mike Locken. So I'd like to reply to that. It was never 20,000, it was 10,000. I never heard of 20,000, ever. And I was in talks with Mr. Burnett all the time, and they were always civil, always good, no issues that way. It was probably even two months ago, the latest, when we had a conversation, and he still, at that point, was trying to, in my terms, extort money from, from Mr. Everett by saying, he's a multimillionaire, just have him, just have him put my driveway in, just have him do this, just have him do that. I said, we're not just going to do that, we, we don't do that, we, we didn't do this. And he was still in that whole mindset of, Mr. Everett has money, what is it to him to put a driveway into my place? And so I went back and I told my boss exactly what he said, and that's, that's where he gets this from. That's what, you know, those are the types of things that he says that you guys should be aware of because there's two sides of the story, and believe me, it's, it's not right what he's saying. And, and it's just, you know, I feel like you guys should know that end of it. If you've got any questions, feel free.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, could I say something?
Absolutely, absolutely, that's what I would say.
You're not going to make me feel like Judge Judy, are you?
No. I'm Walter Mitchell, our office is counsel to the city and therefore the planning board. This has been a fascinating soap opera here tonight, and I understand how important it is to each of these people as far as the emotions, but that's not what your job is, that's not what your focus is. And I appreciate the fact that the board, trying to be neighborly, has encouraged these two sides to resolve this on their own. And whilst progress has been made, it hasn't been completely successful, but again, there's nothing more you can do in that direction. Now, you've got before you, what I see as three different categories of issues. First of all, a, an applica, application was filed with this board to amend the site plan with respect to the, the steel pilings and for a conditional use permit in connection with that and the performance zoning and setbacks. That's still pending, that needs to be addressed by your board. The second set of issues are things that have arisen from these conversations where the applicant has agreed to add or change its plan. Things about the fence, the landscaping and the lighting. That again, should be part of your approval or your denial, whatever happens with, with your decision. And whether those changes are satisfactory or not satisfactory to, to Mr. Burnett, that's, that's a separate issue that's between them. But the, the real question is, are those changes acceptable to the board? The third category is what I'll generalize as claims of damage. The foundation, from the last comments of Mr. Burnett, it sounds like it's turned out to be not that big a deal. The, the driveway and then the, the washing from the dust, the power washing. Especially the, let me just use the driveway as an example. Like you, I don't know what the condition of the driveway was before, or how much worse it's gotten or not gotten. But of importance, this planning board does not act like a judge with the power to make decisions as to disputes between private parties. Your powers are limited to reviewing the site plan. And so you don't have the authority to make determinations as to whether Mr. Burnett's version of what's happened with his driveway or Mr. Everett's version is the right one and what, and you don't have the power to order them, if you sided with Mr. Burnett, to make repairs. That's, again, that's a, an issue between those two private citizens. It's not the business of this board. So I hope that gives you a little focus as to where you should be going tonight. I have, I'm not here to advocate that you approve this or disapprove this, that's for you people to decide. But, thank you.
Thank you.
I can ask, I just want to, I just want to, I agree with everything you just said, but, and I'm not speaking for the board, but it was certainly, when I spoke at the last, actually, two meetings, I think it's been now, you guys can correct me, was to get both parties to talk.
Right.
Which they've done, and, and you're absolutely right, now it.
And I applaud your effort to do it.
Now, now it's out of our hands, right, it's out of our hands now, and I get that. But I, but I don't want, I didn't want you to think, or anybody else in this city to think, that the board, again, just from my perspective, that we don't listen to abutters or parties.
Right.
And, and try to encourage them, even if it means we're tabling something or we're not going to vote on it and we want them to go out and try to work things out again. If they don't do that, it's out of our hands at that point, and I get that. But I don't want you to think that, at least from my perspective, that we were trying to make a decision, like you said, that a court may make or something like that.
I don't, I don't think that.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
Can I ask a question, question real quick? On your last comments there, then are you saying we would be out of line if we say, if we were to vote on this or someone were to make a motion, and as a condition of the motion, that they agree to the power washing? We shouldn't even go there. We should stick to this and the, the landscaping that was talked about and the reduced lighting and.
Yes, the only question I have in my own mind is the power washing. I mean, the, because it sounds like they've basically agreed to it.
Right.
So, and if that's confirmed by the parties, then I don't see any risk in putting that in. But anything where there's a continuing dispute.
Right, okay. Just wanted to be clear.
We get that, at least I get it.
Okay, we still have the public hearing open. Are we good to close it at 10:11, please? Excellent. Staff.
So, a quick recap of why we're here. As you know, there was an appeal to the zoning board concerning the definition of structure. This appeal eventually made its way to Belknap County Superior Court. They, the court ruled that the steel pilings were a structure, remanded it back to the zoning board, the voting, zoning board voted accordingly to recognize them as a structure, and then, I'm doing the short version here for the sake of time. And then that puts it back into the hands of the planning board in that we have, from a planning staff, planning department, we have absolutely no disagreement with, with the concept that if something is a structure, that it will be on the plan. And so therefore, the owners of 51 Elm Street project have updated their plan, amended their plan, to include the details of the sheet pilings because they are can now consider the structure, and so therefore they are on the plan. That is the only change that is to the plan from your June 1st of 2021 approval, which also included performance zoning. At this point in time, the app, the staff is recommending that the board grant the amended site plan, which shows the location of the, of the sheet metal. And to, all of the conditions from previous approvals remain in effect. You look at number one B, you are reaffirming the use of performance zoning on this project. And I would suggest that you add a C, that the applicant will adhere to the fence details and the lighting plan as represented during the meeting, and that they will include power washing, the, the abutters building at the conclusion of the project.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Could I add one other thing?
Oh, sure.
And not that we need any more confusion in this case. And I, I mentioned this to Dean out in the hall before we started. Our fine legislature in early May passed a new law, and it's, it's called House Bill 1661. It's 15 pages of incredibly tiny little print, about a dozen different topics, and, and toward the, I guess on page 12, section 84 of this thing, it has added language to the, the sections in, I think it's 673 or 674, 676, that tell you how you have to make decisions as a plan-doors board. And it says, you've got to make your decision in writing, you've got to give written findings in the decision to support.
Just read about that, yes.
Whatever your decision is. And if you don't give those findings, and if, and the case gets appealed, it can be, it, it's grounds for automatically overturning the decision without visiting the merits of it at all, which none of us want. So whichever way, whichever way you go, I, we'll have to figure out, you as a board will have to figure out in the future how you want to proceed with decision-making. But in this first case, whatever you decide tonight, whether you approve the, the application or, or disapprove it, there's got to be a written decision with those written findings. So why don't you go ahead, make a decision on the understanding that it'd be tentative, not final until you as a board examine a draft decision prepared by Mr. Trefithan. And, and maybe, maybe you could have a, I hate to suggest extra meetings, but a, a short little meeting to discuss a draft decision, again, whatever you decide, it, earlier than your next regular meeting, just to get this moved to a final decision?
Well, we're not holding up the construction, the construction's been continuing on this, so, and our next meeting is three weeks away, so I'm not sure we would need a special meeting.
Well, then maybe it's not necessary. But in any case, I think that should be part of the process, and then you can figure out with less pressure as to what you want to do in the future.
Is this something that would have to do with every decision we make?
Every decision.
All, all our decisions are in writing, though.
That's what the minutes.
Not supported with, with findings as to what supports that decision. What was the basis for?
All the other towns are going crazy over.
So, so what if the person that makes the motion would give the reason why they are making the motion for or against?
That person came, you know, was prepared to do that, then, and the, that'd be fine.
And that goes in the minutes, and therefore it is written justification for that.
It will be written, yeah, right. But.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay.
State reps.
So they're so moved.
So.
What is the pleasure of this board?
I know we didn't make a motion, but that's, but I would make a motion to, to accept with the things that have been agreed to.
To approve.
To approve that as a motion. I'm not going to read it, but I'm just going to say that what Dean just indicated the staff recommends, I would make a motion to approve that with the.
The A, B, and C.
The A, B, and C.
Second.
That include the findings as well?
We'll have to figure that one out.
That's a new one.
Say that again, Dean?
We'll have to figure that out, and we'll have to present.
I know the plan length digest is going crazy.
Right.
Overall.
Yes. We will.
But because the applicant has already agreed, it shouldn't be too big of an issue.
I, I think, I think we'll, we can present you with that finding at the next meeting.
So can I take a vote?
Yeah, and then you'll get the idea of what kind of thing we need to be doing.
And then next meeting, we just.
It'll be part of your package that we distribute, so you'll have time to.
And we just agree with your findings and reasoning.
We can, yeah, we'll figure that out, yes.
Aye, aye, aye.
So all those in favor?
I got, just, I want to clarify, so we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, voting to approve all three of those, and we're going to add sheet piles to the plant, to the plan, to the site plan, correct?
That is, that is on the plan that you.
And the fence and the lighting?
That, that is the amendment.
Okay.
To the plan, is adding the sheet pile.
The fence, the fence, the lighting.
Power washing.
Power washing.
And then all the other stuff that went with.
Yeah.
What's not on there, what's not on there, because there were six, was the, the.
Driveway, foundation.
We're not mitigating that.
I just, I understand that, I just want to go over it. So it's the driveway, the fence, or, excuse me, the foundation, what was the third one?
Come on, man, I didn't. There was going to be a.
Landscaping.
Landscaping.
Landscaping is part of the original plan.
The mulch thing, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? None opposed? It's unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, go on.
Moving right along.
Okay. I'd like to welcome our chairman back. Although I can plow us right through before the, before 10:30 hits, we could do nominations and elections of officers. Let's get that done.
Let's get Peter back up here.
Because I know Charlie has a nomination.
It's true, I do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. President, see if he looks up. I'm leaving the 31st if you want to go.
Motion has to include.
Hey, hey.
Based on these findings, based on this presentation.
I am staying chair right now to get nominations and elections over.
You got to do a snaps in a circle.
I'll make a nomination.
Charlie has a nomination, let's listen.
I'll make a nomination for Peter Burnett for, for chair.
I'm sick, I want to go home.
Don't, you forgot your hat, get back here.
That's why he's, put your hat on.
So I'm making that nomination.
Okay.
For Peter Burnett, if somebody wants a second.
Second.
Are we doing?
We have a second by Kirk?
I'd like to make a nomination. Charlie St. Clair for vice chair.
Second.
Knew you would.
That could not have been any faster. Physically, I don't think you could have.
Okay, with secretary?
Secretary.
Okay. Great. Got that done in two minutes.
Who's secretary?
He, Mike is gonna continue unless there's someone else that would like to serve.
Anybody mind it? Brett?
No, I nominated you.
Oh. That's double secret nomination.
Oh, thank you, God, it's almost over.
So the slate is what? Do we have to vote?
You are chair, vice chair, secretary, all those in favor?
Aye.
And my blood pressure just went down. No more teeth grinding.
I did it for you.
We still have more on your table.
And medication. It's a weird experience. If we did nominations, CIP is approaching, and next month we'll need to appoint members.
I still have my book in the trunk from last time.
We've got a new book this year that always approaches.
Oh, and I've been meaning to return it to you, but just why it's in the trunk.
It'll just be different paper on the inside.
I'll bring it, I'll bring it next time.
Can I do it?
So, there needs to be three members of the planning board appointed to it. Scott has already said that he would, is interested.
Scott, you can't talk forever.
I don't need to be on it this time.
I obviously don't pick the people, I'm just the relayer of the information.
How about Scott, Stacy, and Charlie, the three volunteers?
I would be grateful for anybody.
That's right, and I will say that, if you recall the geese problem?
Yes.
I finally got called to go over there with fireworks, and I went over there, I called you about that, and the geese kept, because they were in the water, they just, I followed them out on the point, and they went around down towards the river, and I called up Parks and Rec, and said, "Yeah, forget it." And that's the first time all summer that they've been on the beach. They were in the beach earlier, and when I got there, they were in the water. But that's the first time all summer, all spring and all summer.
I saw on Twitter that somebody said the geese really enjoyed the fireworks.
Yeah, more started coming. Look, there's fireworks.
In any event, I just wanted to throw that out there, because that was a-
So if you're gonna throw fireworks at geese, you have to get permission from the fire chief?
Technically.
All right, so we have, do we have, was that a motion, that it was Scott, Stacy, and Charlie?
Oh.
To be on the CIP?
Yes.
Is that the will of the board?
Is that a motion?
Do we need a motion?
I can second.
I'll second it.
All right.
Mr. Burnett motioned, that I believe-
She's still running the meeting.
Oh, okay, Stacy motioned.
Oh. Even though I'm-
Just call it open.
Okay. All those in favor? Excellent.
And before we move on, so-
None opposed.
That's fantastic, we have our planning board members. I'm still working on names that I will provide to you for next month for the four members of the public.
Four members of what?
Four members of the public to be appointed.
Oh, right.
Ooh, let me talk to my neighbor.
So if you have a person that loves numbers-
Yes. She would be great, actually.
Sidewalks and DPW.
Let's make sure my name is not mentioned in that paper, because I'm the dumb.
So I'll provide to you those, those names, or if you find people, we can get those four to you next month.
Next.
Moving on. Next.
Um, do we, oh, you know what? Can I just make a comment about, I believe on the agenda, there was performance zoning However, I wanted to go back to, because we're still working on the height issue, right? Is that still a thing?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, this was not to change anything in performance zoning, it was-
Right, I deviated off of that, but I did have an idea, only because you're so fabulous at letters to the editor, and I feel like the public notices are just, nobody reads those, because there's too much wording in it. But somehow, when you write a letter to the editor and just state it bluntly, "We are looking for input from the public about the height of buildings. Please consider emailing the planning board."
I can do that.
With your-
That is a wonderful idea.
With your, I just would really like more public input on something so critical.
And that Laconia's talking Facebook group.
Oh, yeah, then they'll get inundated. It's alien.
No, but you've gotta, you've gotta make it entertaining.
But if they make the effort to send an email-
I don't have a MyBook account or a FaceSpace account.
MyBook?
They'll have videos of those people in the parking lot.
I've seen your MySpace account.
I don't care of this.
I would, I would suggest to the board that we delay the discussion on performance zoning and the Lakes Region facility to the next meeting, simply because-
Excellent, please. 3:00 AM is coming quickly.
Is there anything, like urgently pending up there at State School?
No.
Okay, I thought so. I talked to Charlie.
Not urgently.
Our Arling House, not this one here.
Yeah.
And liaison, we don't have a city councilor here, and I-
Go ahead.
Do you have anything?
Historical district commission, we're still waiting for the city council to do something, and, but the committee itself is, or commission itself, has been working on fine-tuning the rules of the historical, you know, in other words, what goes, what doesn't go. They're trying to make it more user-friendly for people to understand it.
I think it would be good if the planning board adopted rules, too, especially for things like waiver requests and impact fees and all that.
We'll be more than happy to provide you with the current version of the rules and-
Please email them to me and I'll start-
To your heart's content.
I'll start twiddling with them, because, you know, we talk about it, but, and I'm serious, we have got to put a bug-
Don't we use the land use planning regulation?
Do you read the Daily Sun? Do you read the Daily Sun?
Yes.
I used to.
Well, yeah.
Whatever reason, although they're not-
I'm talking about, it says in the ordinance, actually, that the planning board shall adopt rules.
Oh, yes. I asked for them when I first joined.
But that would allow us to-
I got a red mark there.
The board has adopted-
Yeah, I know.
A board has adopted the rules. They are in existence, they have been adopted.
Okay. Let's distribute them to the members and we'll have a discussion about it, because I mean, there are things that have come up, I'm sure, since then.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we good? Can, motion to adjourn? Anybody? Thank you. Yeah, we're done.
Declare it adjourned.
Hallelujah.
I had to let you at least-
So excited.
Close your-